Good evening, and welcome to the Wednesday, February 20th, Issaquah City Council Committee Work Session. This is a reschedule of the February 11th meeting that was postponed due to snowpocalypse. We have three items on the agenda this evening. Reading of notice from Public Employment Relations Commission, IDO 358, Citywide Strategic Plan, and then we're going to have a meeting room security training. And so, we will be taking public comment after the second item, the Citywide Strategic Plan. So if you're here for that, please know that we'll love to get your feedback at that point. And with that, I'm going to hand things over to City Administrator Moon.
Thank you very much. Because the city is a public employer, our labor relations are monitored by the Public Employment Relations Commission, a state agency tasked with oversight of collective bargaining for public agencies. In 2016, the city learned that Swedish doctors and the hospital would be leaving the preferred provider network in our medical plan. The city informed all employees and labor groups that the change would be coming and that Swedish would no longer be in network in 2017. To mitigate impacts, the city expanded preventative benefits to cover preventative care the same, whether it was received in or out of network. If the city had not expanded this benefit, employees would have paid out-of-network rates for preventative care from Swedish providers. In January 2017, the Issaquah Police Support Services Association filed an unfair labor practice complaint with the Public Employment Relations Commission and sought a decision that would have put their employees on a more expensive preferred network, one where Swedish was participating as an in-network provider. The case was heard in July, and a decision was recently issued in which the state rejected the union argument that the city provide a preferred provider option with Swedish as an in-network provider. However, the state did find that the city committed an unfair labor practice by increasing the coverage for preventative care without first bargaining that issue to an agreement or to an impasse. Accordingly, the Public Employment Relations Commission has required that the city read the following notice at the meeting tonight. Public Employment Relations Commission, Notice to Employees: State law gives you the right to form, join, or assist an employee or organization in union. Bargain collectively with your employer through a union chosen by a majority of employees. Refrain from any and all of these activities except you may be required to make payments to a union or charity under a lawful union security provision. The Washington State Public Employment Relations Commission conducted a legal proceeding and ruled that the city of Issaquah committed an unfair labor practice and ordered us to post this notice to employees. We unlawfully refused to bargain the Issaquah Police Support Services Association when it failed to bargain the impacts of the Swedish network's decision to leave the prime network and unilaterally expanded preventative care coverage to fully cover Swedish providers at in-network rates. To remedy our unfair labor practices, we will give notice to and upon request negotiate in good faith with the Issaquah Police Support Services Association before attempting to mitigate the impacts of the Swedish network of providers' departure from the premier prime network and unilaterally changing the costs of medical services provided to employees. We will not fail to bargain with the union over the impacts of Swedish network's decision to leave the prime network. We will not make unilateral decisions in an effort to mitigate the impacts of the Swedish network's decision to leave the prime network. We will not in any other manner interfere with restraining or coercing employees in the exercise of their collective bargaining rights under the laws of the state of Washington. Thank you.
Thank you, City Administrator. With that, we're going to move to ID 0358, Citywide Strategic Plan, with David Fujimoto, our Sustainability Director. And I'm going to be asking Brian Scott with BDS Planning to facilitate the conversation as we're coming back from the six subgroups that we've spent the last...
Several weeks.
Has it only been two or three weeks?
Yes.
Working as subgroups?
Great. Thank you very much again, David Fujimoto, Sustainability Director. I'm going to be brief. Just wanted to thank staff and council for your work over the past several weeks and months working on strategic plan. We're coming to a point where I think we've had some really good conversation and consolidation work, especially by all the ad hoc committees by city council, and wanted to express gratitude for that. Our discussion here tonight is important because it helps us move forward and kind of hopefully come to some place with the project where we hope to be able to move forward with preparation of a draft plan and then work to engage the community to provide feedback on that plan. But we'll kind of follow the conversation tonight and see where that takes us. And I'll turn it over to Brian Scott to lead us through that conversation.
Thank you, David. I'm Brian Scott with BDS Planning in Urban Design. Happy to be with you here tonight and follow up the work we all did in some ad hoc committees in recent weeks. What we want to do this evening is take a quick update on the strategic plan process, spend most of our time talking, affirming the goals, objectives, and performance measures that we've worked on in those subgroups. And then we want to take a moment at the end to talk about the format and table of contents for the final document. So we'll take just a few moments to remind you where we are in the process. And then, most of our time will be about your reporting out the results of the subgroup work. Our plan for that piece of the agenda is that I will read the outcomes from those work and then let all of you comment on your thoughts on how we ended up where that is. And then we'll take a few minutes at the end to discuss the final document and next steps. So the desired outcome tonight, I want to say this real clearly, is what we want to -- the place we want to be at the end of the meeting is having your agreement that the content on the plan's vision, mission, priorities, goals, and objectives are ready for community conversation and to go out and get feedback from the community. We'll also touch on some potential actions, but those are items that'll be worked out in budgeting process in future months and years. But right now, we want to make sure we have enough agreement that you're ready for community feedback on vision, mission, goals, and objectives and potential performance measures. So that's really the goal we're looking for tonight. Reminding you that when we started this process, we set out some high-level goals for the plan. We wanted to have vision and strategy alignment. That is, we want the council and the staff to have a disciplined approach to how we are -- the actions we're taking are aligning with our broader strategy and vision. And we want to make sure we have the different city departments coordinating on implementing those objectives. We want to engage the community with diverse voices and have community-driven priorities. And I think we've done real well at engaging a lot of folks in the community, well over 1,000 people involved through various activities last year. And we want an actionable plan that has clear priorities, is realistic about capacity. We know how we're going to assign specific activities to different individuals and departments. We want a plan that will drive the budget and capital improvement program decisions. And I'm going to walk through how that's going to happen here in just a moment. We want to have metrics and monitoring for seeing how we're doing on the plan. And then the plan needs to be a good communication tool so the community understands where we are. So recap, you all approved several months ago, vision, mission, and guiding principles. The vision agreed to was that Issaquah thrives as a welcoming community, creating a sustainable legacy for future generations that honors its rich history and passion for the natural You all agreed some time ago that the mission for the city would be updated to foster a safe, vibrant, livable, and inclusive community through effective stewardship and quality public services. You also agreed to several guiding principles. This plan and the values of the city, the guiding principles are people, the environment, community prosperity, service excellence, and equity. I'm not going to read all those statements again. We've done that several times in your previous meetings. And then, before I get into the goals, objectives, performance measures, and potential actions, I want to remind you of where we go after the plan is done, because I think that'll help you kind of think through how ready you are to move forward. So again, by way of review, we want to talk about the implementation framework. And that is that strategic planning is longer-term strategic thinking about where is the city trying to get and how are you going to get there. Implementation, then, after you get the plan done, implementation is the strategic thinking confronted with new realities. And that's things that came up that you didn't know about, its current budget. It's how do you take that strategic thinking and apply new realities and bring those together? And during implementation, you'll be most effective, if you remember, that council is setting direction, where are we trying to get? And staff is managing implementation about how we're going to get there within the budget that you all approve. And we'll have an annual schedule that I'll go through in just a minute about policymaking and budgeting. So every year, you're going to set policy and adopt a budget, which tells the staff how to manage to your guidance. And then, the annual work plan is a prioritization of the work through a strategic work plan and a critical services work plan. The strategic work plan being, what are we doing on the strategic plan? And the critical services work plan is, what do we have to do because we're a city government and we have to keep doing it? And that's what we're in the business of doing. So taking that a step deeper, we've got three parts of a city's annual work plan. We have the strategic work plan, the critical services work plan, and then timely opportunities because stuff comes up that we weren't thinking about while we were doing this nice process. The strategic work plan is identified through the strategic planning process. It's selected, the priorities for the year are selected by the annual council-staff prioritization. And the timing is things that are important over the next five years. Five-year strategic plan, what are we trying to make happen over the next five years? The critical services work plan are critical city functions. You are a city government, therefore, you're doing police, fire, maintaining roads, and so forth. Things that are essential to the health, safety, and welfare of community members. Mandates that you're responding to from other governmental units. And the timing of these things are always important. It's what you have to do because you're a city government. And then, timely opportunities are the things that come up, just because that's what happens. It's a few modest opportunities with agreement by the council and the senior leadership team. They're kind of nice-to-have, easy wins, things that you can pull off because a grant became available or this and that, a piece of property became available, whatever it is. You can only consider, because you're trying to think strategically and balance your budget and keep up with your critical services, you can't be doing everything that comes up. So you're only considering after screening, is this item that we're thinking about, does it interfere with the strategic priorities? Does it interfere with the critical work plan? So it can't detract from those. And then, it's the things that are important now, because if you don't take this opportunity, it's going to pass you by. Does that all make sense so far? So then, the cycle in that is you go through an annual cycle. We're going to adopt the strategic plan later on this spring, right as you are beginning your strategy and budget planning workshop with the staff. You're basically starting to lay the groundwork for the annual budget. You've got a financial workshop, and then you have the budgeting process with a strategic work plan and the critical services work plan. So that's beginning to say, okay, we have our strategic plan, and now, what are we going to be able -- what are we going to do this year, in the first year? Because it's important, and it fits within the budget within the city services. So you develop the -- start implementing the work plan, and you're doing it. And then, as you move forward through implementation, you're doing a performance evaluation and a community survey to see how the community feels about that implementation. Then, you're going to report out to the community about what you found from that and gather their input. And then, as you go into next year, you'll be making some adjustments to the strategic plan. And then, as it comes around again, you'll be beginning again with the strategy and budget workshop and moving into the following year's budget. So every year, as you go through this, you're going to be thinking about the potential actions that you might take in that year to implement your strategic plan in the context of all the other things I just mentioned. Makes sense? So it's coming around each year. You've got these longer-term strategic priorities, which don't change very much. You make small adjustments each year. But then, each year, you're identifying specific work items that you're taking on in this year in the context of that budget. What we want to talk about tonight is the big strategic direction. And are you ready to take that out to the community? That big strategic direction is six priority areas, each with a goal, an objective under each of those goals, and some performance measures. We have talked about, in the small groups, some potential actions that might be actions you would take in the future to implement those objectives. We're not approving those actions tonight. They're basically a list of, these are the kind of things we might do. And we -- these documents were all prepared in a hurry for a meeting that was a couple weeks ago, and we didn't change them when the meeting got delayed. But if I had one thing I could do, I'd go through, and everywhere it says "action," I wish it said "potential action," because we're not trying to approve all of those actions now. We're trying to approve the goals and the objectives above them. That makes sense? I feel like that's an important point, because I know that there's -- you know, I feel like we have more agreement at that higher level. And as we get down into the actions, people are -- we got more tension. So I'm -- really, what we want is, are the goals okay? Are the objectives okay? Are the performance measures okay? Are we ready to get community feedback? And we wouldn't want to do that if we didn't think that basically the community said, yeah, good, that we'd be -- that the council would be okay. We want to understand how we're doing on that before we're done tonight.
Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you. I don't know -- this is really the first time that I can recall we've talked about this. So I'm going to have to think about this a little bit. But if there's -- it looks like there are potentially six or seven -- I don't know, points here, which means it looks to me like it's almost a constant working on, in some form, the strategic plan. Or either we're gathering input, we're synthesizing that input, we're talking about the priorities, and then strategic plan adjustment, which has me a little bit -- concerned is not the right word, I guess. Not really understanding how this is not just a -- just like a total work in progress for five years, which seems a little odd to me.
So maybe Emily wants to -- go ahead.
So tell me if I don't answer your question. Strategic plan adjustment, I wouldn't interpret that phrase as being analyze the whole plan and think about all that you want to change. I think it's a moment and time where we have an opportunity to pause and say, okay, let's review what we've accomplished over the last year. Let's review the community input that we have received. Let's have a conversation about what maybe new or slightly different action items we might want to pursue in the upcoming year. Think about year three or four in the plan where we've accomplished 80% of the plan. And maybe we've identified, there are a few more things we'd like to do under the same goals and objectives that we had established right now. And so, that gives you an opportunity to say, let's provide some direction to staff. We've heard this from community. We would like to build some capacity into the budget to do a few extra things under this particular objective.
No, I -- it's -- I just -- some more. And then, the other question I have, and maybe we'll get to it after this, is what the -- tonight, you're hoping to get this document to a point where we can go back out to the community and say, here is our community-driven draft strategic plan. What do you think? And I just want to know what that process looks like when we're ready to get there.
Councilmember Ray.
So I have a slightly different take on the cycle than my good friend, Councilmember Goodman. Because I actually like the adjustments to the strategic plan, because I think we live in a pretty dynamic world and a pretty dynamic community. And I'm pretty certain that we've done good work, but I'm also very certain we didn't get it right and that we're going to need to evolve this as we move forward. And then, I have a plan to check out, which always makes me happy. But I do have some concern about the way we're going to use the plan to decide what goes in the annual work plans, because that limits us in some frame to a single-year horizon in terms of planning. We have our objectives that have a longer planning horizon, but our initiatives are annual work plan-bound. And so, I want to understand how we're going to attack or address that. And then, secondly, I think, and this is what I buzzed in on, and then you went and stole my thunder, I'm curious about how we take this out to the community. Once we, you know, say, yes, this is our plan, what are we asking the community to provide feedback on? And how do we then use that to move the plan forward? So just a couple thoughts at this juncture.
Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you. So I just want to make it clear that sure I agree with you, Chris, that I don't think it's a -- we work on this for a few minutes and we're done, and a few months and we're done. And then, you say, nope, 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 it is what it is for five years. My concern is that it -- I don't want this to be a plan that feels like we're just constantly working on it. No, we're going to talk about that in a couple months. No, we're going to change that in a couple months. So I think there's a difference between those two. And just since we haven't done this before, I just think we ought to have some certainty that we have planned for five years and that obviously there are changes and there are things that we will learn. I don't have a problem with that. But with all that stuff up there, it looks like this is -- yep, we're going to be working on it for five years, and I -- that's what my concern is.
So my sort of thought on that is, it is a five-year plan, so yes, you are going to be working on it for five years, but not changing your mind every three months, which I acknowledge you could read this that way. So the sense is, you do an annual budget, and eventually, you'll do a biannual budget. But you'll do it, if you do that, you're going to do adjustments. And the point is, you're going to say, okay, here's a five-year plan, and that's not going to change much, except unless you need to change it, and you do that rarely. But what are we taking on this year? And then, as we go through the year, how's it going? And then, do we need to make adjustments to the plan for next year? That's essentially, it's kind of a once-a-year checking in on how are we doing on the plan? And it kind of is happening during that time. That's how this is intended to show, is you sort of, we're planning for a while, we're doing for a long time, checking in, getting feedback, and then making adjustments if needed. That's how this is intended to show, kind of an annual cycle of staying current.
Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you. I had a comment on the earlier statement that you made about that actions could have been written as potential actions. So -- and I don't know if -- I don't know if other people felt this way, but when I was in the small groups, I did think that the actions were going to be part of the plan. And so, I assessed them with the same sort of critical eye that I did the objectives. And I also noticed that in some other cities' plans, like Salem, they have goals and actions. And then, they also have, I think it's objectives slash actions. So they really put their objectives as actions. And I think it's a -- I think it's important now, if we're going to be -- if we're going forward saying the actions were really meant as hypotheticals, they aren't part of the plan that will go out to the community, because they're really not part of the plan itself. They're more of sort of a supplemental idea of what actions we could take. I think that makes -- that makes me think a little bit differently about the objectives, because some of the objectives are much closer to actions right now than others. And I, once we get into that part, I think it makes that whole conversation just more important if we're going for not going for actions specifically in the plan than making sure that those action objectives that are there, that we put them on the same sort of plane with the other objectives. But I also just wanted to confirm that the actions would not be something that is going out to the public, because that was -- I was thinking that they would be part of the plan, because I didn't hear about the potential wording before.
Join you at the podium. So I think they're potential in the sense that, as a part of this cycle, it's anticipated that they would become work programs as a part of that decision-making process. So there was quite a bit of work that was put into thinking about, how would you make those objectives real, knowing what we know now? But also recognizing that there is a process by which they would need to be prioritized. There was quite a bit of work that was done in the ad hoc committees to consolidate and take a look at those actions. I think we did articulate that they were there primarily to help to illustrate the intent around the actions. I think the main purpose was that we didn't want to get too bogged down into all of the details across all the different actions, because there are so many. We are anticipating that the actions would be included with the draft plan, but they are potential actions until they're kind of adopted as part of the work program.
So can I get clarity, then, on if the actions are -- if the plan is to follow up and do those actions, or if the plan is really about the objectives and...
Let me suggest this, that the -- in adopting the strategic plan, you are naming the priorities, naming the goals, and naming the objectives, and identifying potential actions. But those actions aren't budgeted until you adopt an annual budget. And at that point, that's when it becomes, you're going to do it, because actually, there's resources there to support it. And you anticipate over the next five years, you will work those in as you come along based on your resources. So it's like, you haven't actually -- the strategic plan is not a budget. It's a big-picture strategic objective. And then, annually, you've got to budget, what are you going to do this year? And that's where the actions come in. Does that make sense? Because you might not have budget, over the next five years, you might not have budget to do all the actions that you're thinking out, just, you know, depending on whatever. You might have more budget, and you could do some more stuff.
So Chris, and then I'll have a comment.
Okay. So I got to get this straight, because I think this is really very, very important right now. Because if these are potential, i.e., examples of what we might do, that's one thing. If these are things that we're going to do should we have sufficient funding, that's a different thing. And if these are things we're committing to, that's a whole different thing. And I don't know what animal this is right now. And so, it's really difficult for me to say, yeah, I can get behind this. If I don't know, by endorsing or adopting the strategic plan, we're saying, these are our top priorities, these actions? Or, these actions are just a way to illustrate the things that we're adopting, which are these objectives? So I need clarity on what the heck this is. And if these are potentials, I don't want them going to the public, because if we put it out in the public, then we are committing to it, and we're setting those expectations. So I need clarity on what this is, and depending upon what it is, whether or not it goes out to the public.
So let me see if I can be helpful. I see this as, at some level, we go down to some level of granularity, then we hand it off to the administration and say, go do, right? It's been my hope that the objective level is the level of detail to which we stop and we say, okay, this is what we -- this is what we're looking for. And then, the administration can go and populate action items as they see appropriate to respond in the same way that we've always had city goals, and the administration would come back and respond to it. I value the fact that we have action items, that we have had action items up to this point, because it addresses a question that got asked a while back, which is, is there really too much to do here in five years? Right? And this, and these action items being here, as straw man as they are, helps us feel confident that, yes, indeed, there is -- it's reasonable to accomplish these things in five years. But I also agree with you that the idea of the question of whether those action items go out to the public, I would have a concern with as well, because I agree with you. I think there would be an expectation that they would then become settled policy for the city.
City Administrator, do you want to -- oh, I'm sorry. Council Deputy President Patisse.
Thank you. So when I look, just thinking through some of the comments that we just talked about as we -- especially this second slide, I think that that's helpful. I think the first slide is a little bit busy, and I can see where we're, you know, starting to think we're just continuing. to think we're just continually checking in. But in working with strategic plans in the past, outside of government, the adjust, plan, do, and check actually makes sense to me. And having the action items be examples or things that we may be working on, it just seems as you're moving through the year, there are certain things that come up. And though having the ability to have some flexibility within those action items seems to make sense. I would have the same concern based on that, if I'm understanding that correctly. I would have the same concern about the action items going out to the public. I think that, or being able to have the objectives and the goals go out for feedback, I think, would be the most helpful because those actions could be moving and changing and there could be other things coming as we're checking and adjusting. So to me, it's making sense, but that would be my one question.
So if I had to say what I think I'm hearing right now is people are sort of getting that the actions are annual budgeted items, but maybe you don't want to put them out there to the public because it would raise expectations. Perhaps it would make sense to walk through and talk about the goals and the objectives and whatever you want to say about the potential actions for a while, and then circle back to this question about exactly what are we putting out to the public once we've, I don't know, it just occurring to me that we're talking about this hypothetically, and maybe we should put the whole thing out there.
Just try to answer, Councilmember Ray's question as directly as maybe I can. And I think council members have spoken to this. The actions were meant to illustrate how we might go about the goals and objectives and to give you some sense of, therefore, what might be doable from a budgetary standpoint, from a workload standpoint. They cannot be firm commitments, particularly in the case where they require a budget allocation because that's going to require this annual conversation. And we are fully cognizant that those other things pop up and you need to have flexibility to decide how to proceed with the strategic plans. So we have desired to have this conversation and to get your input on what you would like to share with the public so that the public can also understand what the plan might involve. But knowing that those action items can be adjusted over time, we're also supportive of just getting the feedback at the goal and objective level. So we had toyed with the idea of maybe we put them in an appendix, you know, with a bunch of caveats on them, just again, so people can kind of see what exactly might you do. And then we had also discussed maybe leaving them out entirely and just checking on alignment with community desires on the goal and objective level. Have I answered your question?
Thank you. Councilmember Hunt, have any questions?
I think at this point, if we are not planning on doing the things that are the actions, I think it would be confusing. I mean, it was confusing to me that we had things in the plan that we aren't planning on doing. So I think I would not be comfortable at this point with putting in hypothetical actions in our strategic plan because this is what we're saying we're committing to for the next five years.
Councilmember Walsh.
So looking over the three plans that you had provided from other cities, all of them have actions in there. It's just how they present that. In Tacomas, it says Tacoma Will Do, which is a very strong statement. In others, it's, here's our objective and potential actions related. I think either way, knowing that each of these have actions involved, I think it would be very difficult to present a strategic plan to the community without saying, how are we going to do that? So I would be in support of putting it in, but eliminating maybe the timeline and the potential budget amounts so that it looks more like, here are potentially things that we could do to accomplish these objectives and goals without making the claim that we are going to.
So I'll add, I think it comes down to commitments, right? I think these are planned to be done. And you asked about things that weren't planned. I think they're planned to be done, but they're not commitments yet because the council hasn't allocated the money yet. So I want to, I want to be careful about, I firmly agree with the idea that we need to be careful about the expectations we set on things we haven't committed to doing yet. I'm sort of flexible. I think the point here is that we're not going to ask, we're not going to be seeking feedback on the action, at the action item level. We really want to make sure that our goals and objectives are, you know, that the community feels they reflect the community's concerns. So I don't care so much how we parse where we, I mean, this is a public document. Anybody who goes to tonight's meeting is going to see these action items, whether we put them in an appendix or whether we strip out the cost and scheduling information. I think the point is that we're looking for feedback on the goals and objectives. Council Deputy President?
Oh. Sorry. Councilmember Hunt?
Well, I think it also is important for our conversation this evening, at least for me, because I am still actually unclear about if they are potential. I mean, I think the word straw man was used earlier, or if they are actually the sort of best action items that the staff spent a bunch of time thinking about how we could support those objectives. And so this is, these are the sorts of things we would put in the plan. It's still unclear to me, and I think it does sort of inform the rest of the conversation about whether we are talking concretely about these actions to support these objectives or if we're really just going to focus on the objectives and then think about the actions as part of the cycle later on. And also to Councilmember Walsh's point about the action objective, I mean, I think it's a good point. Other councils have, other cities have in their action plan really just put them together. And some of our objectives, like I said earlier, I think some of our objectives are more like actions and some are more directional. And so that could be an approach we could take, but I just would, I just feel that it would help to have clarity, and I personally am still a bit unclear.
Councilmember Goodman.
It seems to me that there's almost agreement that these are just potential because they're not funded necessarily yet. So I, and I also think that we potentially miss an opportunity to ask the community if in these potential action items, we've hit the mark or missed the mark, or maybe they have completely different ideas. So I guess my feedback and preference would be that we make it super, super clear that they are potential, possible things we're thinking about. And then, and I agree with Councilmember Walsh, that we take out any appearance that these are the items. And then we make an, we actually seek some feedback on, from the public as part of this, when it goes out to the community, about what they think about these action items because that's a great opportunity to get feedback.
I have concerns about that because we said going to the subgroups that we were not going to review the action items to the same level that we did objectives and goals. And so we didn't in the subgroups. So I have a concern, I mean, if it's what the council wants to do, it's what we'll do, but I have a concern that we'll go and present material and that was not intended to be public policy level, but was intended to be sort of implementation level details that we as a body have not reviewed fully. We didn't in the subgroups and we probably won't tonight. And that we'll present them to the public without having reviewed them ourselves, if in fact we do seek feedback from the public. But it's whatever we as a body want to do.
City Administrator Moon.
Sure. May I propose that we come back to this question about what will go out to the public after we work through the various goals and objectives and get your feedback at that level? I think what we have established is they're potential action items, and they are potential action items because you don't make them real until, if there's an allocation that's needed with them, until you have blessed a strategic work plan. And a piece of that might require actual budget authority as well. So they're potential until that moment in time happens. To Councilmember Hunt's point, they were examples, and I'll say, our best examples of the things that we thought would move the needle on each of those objectives. But again, you're going to have an annual opportunity to kind of chime in on that, and community members will also have opportunity to provide input. But as to what we're going to take out to public and what caveats are attached or where it lives, is it appendix, is it really in the meat of the thing that we're distributing and getting feedback on, I think we can come back to that at the end and sort of do a thumbs up, thumbs down to kind of assess, do you want it to go out? Do you want it to be just, you know, the list of potential action items with the caveats just so people can maybe feel the plan a little bit more and provide some input on particular action items?
Councilmember Hunt.
So quick question. At the end of this process, with the strategic plan, there will be actions under each objective. Is that correct? That's the vision for what our plan is going to look like at the end of the day?
I think that's part of what we're discussing right now. What I envision the plan being is introductory remarks about the process that we have undertaken in community engagement, all of that, how the plan will be used, and then a discussion on each goal area, including its objectives. I don't know that we are saying we're going to list action items under each of those objectives. I think that's part of what we're discussing now. That's up for debate, and you have various opinions on that, but it doesn't necessarily need to be part of the plan. And you certainly are not adopting action items right now because you can't bind a future council.
I thought Council President Marts' comment a little while ago that said that they were, that they're intended actions, but they're not committed actions until you budget them, you know, until, and so it's like you're, I don't, there's been, I think as Emily said, I think this is the staff's best shot at outlining how they would go, how they, based on the information they have today, how they would go about doing this. But I would again suggest, can we go through and talk about all of them and then sort of circle back about what do we put out there to the public? Does that seem reasonable?
I think you're seeing some agreement. I want to ask about a separate thing before we move on though, because I don't think we addressed it. Councilmember Ray had a question about how if you sort of have this annual strategic plan adjustment, there was a question around multi-year objectives and how that process would work. Do you want to take a couple of seconds on that before we move on?
We're right in the, we're in the second year of doing this with Salem right now, and they have several items that are multi-year. So when we came to the council for them to adopt their, they call it their policy agenda, but it's basically the annual strategic work plan, we had several things that, remember you passed this last year, you put it on the list, we're not done, you know, we're still working on it. So that's there, and that's using up budget and staff capacity. So our capacity to take on new things has limits related to that. And I can't imagine you won't have a similar thing going on. Several of these things will take more than a year to do.
Thank you.
Just adding a level of specificity to where this is going and sort of when is the first time you're going to have a shot at this budgeting? The intention is that the, this is the implementation cycle and the budget cycle for this year. The intention is we'd be adopting the strategic plan in sort of May-ish, April, May in this year, so between the second and third step on this budgeting cycle where you've got the community survey happening in March and April, the CIP development from March to July. During that time, you'll be adopting the strategic plan because you've had this feedback. So before you go into the strategy and budgeting, planning workshop, you have your strategic plan, your goals and objectives are set. And so as you consider, you've got the council and the senior leadership, you've got the survey data, you've got preliminary financial information, you've got current context, and you have strategic plan. And now we're going to identify priority strategic work plan actions to inform the budget development during June through August. And then you have financial workshops so you understand where you are financially in August, and then budget and work plan in September, and then the budget is adopted in November. So basically, immediately as we adopt the strategic plan, we go to work on that first year work plan, which would be the 2020 work plan. Does that make sense? So we're going right, we're not waiting around, we're going right into it. Okay. So we got six priority areas, each with a goal and some objectives and some potential actions that we have talked about. And again, what I would suggest is that I will present the goal and the objectives and the actions and the performance measures quickly to keep us moving. And then I would invite the council members who participated in that ad hoc session to add their comments about how we ended up in that spot. Does that seem like a reasonable process? So reminding, we have six priority areas, mobility, core infrastructure, growth and development, social and economic vitality, environmental stewardship, city leadership, and services. We reorganized these a little bit. These aren't in any sort of priority area. For a presentation tonight, we sort of put things that are more connected with each other a little closer to each other. This is just about getting subjects lined up, not, nothing about priority in this. We're thinking we might want to present the plan as a circular, sort of everything radiating from the center rather than a hierarchical list. We set a goal under each of these things. And mobility, getting around town is easier for people who live, work, and play here. Core infrastructure, an infrastructure system that is planned, designed, built, and maintained well supports current and future community needs. Growth and development, growth is proactively managed, planned, and communicated in a responsible way that retains our strong sense of community and livability. Social and economic vitality, an economically vital and diverse community is supported by robust businesses, affordable housing, and supportive services. Environmental stewardship, environmental resources are proactively enhanced, protected, and stewarded. And city leadership and services, leadership and accountability is provided in the delivery of public services for our growing and diversifying community. You adopted these long since. We had a series of ad hoc work groups to work on the detail underneath of those in recent weeks. We were clarifying council intent behind the goals. We had all of you practice sort of elevator or grocery store speeches about what you meant by these goals. We spent quite some time refining the objectives and performance measures, and we got advice from council members about potential actions. Before the ad hoc meeting, the objectives under the goals looked like this. And then after those work sessions happened, they changed a little bit. Happily, from a consultant perspective, there's a few less objectives. So we went in the right direction, got the plan a little more focused. The highlights in yellow are the places where something changed. We've got three objectives under mobility, three under growth and development, three under environmental stewardship, four under social and economic vitality, one in core infrastructure, and two in city leadership and services. I'm going to walk us through each of those one by one now, and I'll present the goal and the objectives, and then give you a chance to talk about it, and then we'll move on to the next one. There's six of these, so however long it takes to do each one, that's how long we're going to be here. The financial impact as a whole, based on the staff's estimate, in the five-year implementation cost of this would be in the range of $3.1 to $4.4 million, not including capital investment. Range of costs for individual actions, I assume that is, would be half a million to $1.1 million. And then the prioritization of annual strategic and council, critical service work plans will be important. So we've got all the critical services happening, and at the same time, we're taking on these strategic things. So that'll be key, and that's what that annual cycle is about. So your report out on what happened in those ad hoc work groups, because there were three of you in each work group, you weren't all here, although I think you've been doing some watching of the tapes of those meetings. So first one is mobility. Again, the goal is getting around town is easier for people who live, work, and play here. Three objectives, an objective around planning and funding. The specific wording of the objective is in the handout that went out to you ahead of the meeting. I'm not going to read it all to you here. One around planning and funding, one around near-term connections and efficiencies, and one around light rail integration. And then there were some actions, some potential actions identified under each of those objectives. And then the performance measures, we had a good discussion on performance measures, and at and at the end of, we ended up with four. One about the mode share split, one about system connectivity, one about system access, and one about community satisfaction. So it would be the share of travel by transportation mode, be about the percentage completion of identified bike, pedestrian, and vehicle network gaps, be one about percentage of housing units within a quarter mile of transit service, and percentage of housing units within a quarter mile of regional non-motorized network. And community satisfaction would be the rating of the overall ease of getting around to the places you usually have to visit in Issaquah. So there you have it. That's mobility. Three objectives, four performance measures. Comments from the folks that participated in that work group?
Council Deputy President Batista.
So, thank you for the presentation tonight. I think with mobility, the one thing that I really like about this is the simplicity of the goal, because when we talk about elevator pitches, that would be something that I think would be really easy for everyone to wrap their head around and understand, because that's where, you know, our focus, where we would want our focus to be. And then breaking down the objectives, really by larger-term projects and securing that funding, adopting the mobility master plan, and then also working on smaller-term projects that, being able to complete some of those smaller capital improvements and thinking about what some of those would be. And then we also broke out information and another objective around getting out in front of the light rail station and integration.
Other comments, thoughts?
I like that.
Customer Walsh, you get a pass.
I have watched all of the videos, and I have to say, you guys did a fantastic job, so two thumbs up.
Wow.
Can I do a process check? Because I'm not sure from what Brian was saying. Are you just looking for a report out from the ad hoc team, or are you looking for general comments right now?
I think we, I think we want to give the committee a chance to make a report out, and then we do want general comments. So.
Councilmember Goodman.
I think I was on the committee. As in, three weeks. The, I don't really, Mariah did a great job of summarizing, and I agree with that. The, I feel a little bit differently than my other two people in the committee about objective three. I'm not as sold on having that on there, but this is for going out to the public, so that part of it's fine.
Thank you. And I will mention something I forgot to mention at the beginning of the meeting tonight. Councilmember Winterstein is excused this evening, but he did tell me that generally he was favorable towards the information that was going to be presented this evening. Councilmember Ray?
So I'm just looking at the performance measures, and I'm looking, and I'm balancing those off for the goal, so I don't know what the answer is here. But if I measure mode share, and I measure system connectivity, and the way they're described here, and I measure system access, I'm not sure that I, and I'm just going to sit customer sat over here because it's pretty subjective, but we have three objective measures here. I'm not sure if we move the needle on those three measures that we will address the goal. I mean, we will move the needle on the goal. So I don't, there's implied in these measures that motor vehicle transportation is unfavorable. And the reality of our situation is, it is the dominant mode of transportation in the city. It is the one that people measure our performance by, and I don't see anything that speaks to, how do I get from my house to Costco and back on Saturday without spending 45 minutes? And so I just want to make sure that when we're looking at performance measures, that we can use them to help us see if we're making progress towards our goal. And a lot of these are about mechanisms that I'm not sure are going to really help people get around town that much easier. So it's a thought, I'd be really curious to see, you know, as we put this out, kind of what the public thinks about that.
Sure. So I was not on the subgroup either. The thing for me, I mean, these things are applied, that I can't look at this without thinking about the fact that we do level of service, right? And level of service is for the dominant mode of mobility for our residents is a key measure, right? And so we have that already, and so if we didn't have that, then I would look at this and I would go, huh. But I feel like when you put this on top of level of service, I feel a little more comfortable.
But perhaps you'd rather have level of service as a performance measure under this goal than one of these?
It's already cooked into many of the things we do from a public policy standpoint.
But if we're going to reporting back on how we're doing on the strategic plan, you'd want, that would be an important metric to you.
And that was my reaction too, is level of service is something we already have, so the cost of collecting that information would not be particularly difficult. And it probably is a more accurate portrayal of, are people getting around town easier? So I could get behind that. But I'm also very curious to see what the public, as we put this out, how they react to these, these four performance measures, particularly the first three, which tend to be more objective.
Councilmember Goodman.
So we do have level of service, but I have never seen level of service be commensurate with whether, or show, or even if the numbers are better, actually prove on the ground that people are getting around faster. It's for a different purpose. Just, I don't think it, I agree with Chris, and I also don't think level of service helps us in any way.
Right?
I will say to the thing around community satisfaction, Councilmember Ray, you're going to see that on several different, several different of these, right? Because there's a point where, because we do this national city survey or whatever it's called, you know, that we feel like that's another area of information that we glean that, particularly because we can track it over time and because we can track it compared to other cities, it has some utility as a more subjective measure than objective.
When I concur, I wouldn't want to ever take that off. I was just really speaking to more objective measures that we can touch in a different way, but no, absolutely, community satisfaction in almost every area is super important.
Councilmember Hunt.
So firstly, I think in the goal, we have this goal of it being easier for people, and we had talked about that word, easier, before. It's a subjective word, so I think community satisfaction is maybe one of our best ways to assess it, because community satisfaction is subjective, and getting around town, it being easier is also subjective. Easier for one person might not be easier for another person. And then I thought if this is, if this is going out to the public, some more about mode share splits, about why we think that that is a performance measure would be good. I think it's a little bit jargony to talk about mode share splits. So maybe some context around why we, why we think that that is important, and also what it is. And then I have one other comment, which is about the objective three, which is the light rail one. So while I, while I agree with some of my colleagues that I, that this is an important one, it really, to me, is one of the objectives that reads a lot like an action. There's an action underneath it that is basically to do the objective. So it's one that, that is, in my opinion, more action-like than many of the other things. And so I think that becomes maybe more important if we're talking about potential actions, and then we have an objective that is a concrete thing that is also quite action-like.
Should we move ahead? Okay, that takes us to core infrastructure. As noted earlier, the goal is an infrastructure system that is planned, designed, built, and maintained well supports current and future community needs. One objective under this, lifecycle operation and maintenance. There were two objectives under this when we came up with the earlier draft, and during the ad hoc committee process, the infrastructure group agreed that the other objectives was more about accommodating growth, and they thought that objective belonged in the growth and development area, and the growth and development group concurred. So it's still here, it's just on a different page. So one, one objective under lifecycle operation and maintenance with a couple of potential actions. The performance measures, two of those, one about asset maintenance deferral rate and satisfaction with quality of infrastructure. So the first one was quality and value of maintenance that is deferred, that is, how far behind are you on keeping up with your infrastructure? And then community satisfaction with the infrastructure composite of various survey categories. So anybody that was on the work group want to comment on the objective or these performance measures?
Councilmember Ray?
I'll go. So I think the, the infrastructure group had a difficult time because infrastructure is not particularly interesting, and there was a lot of debate about whether or not this even needed to be a strategic goal and initiative. And then I think we, we settled on its importance, and the key elements of this really were that we have an infrastructure that when we deploy it, not only are we deploying the infrastructure to meet the immediate needs, but we are recognizing the lifecycle and ongoing cost of maintaining that infrastructure. And as a tribute to the council president, I think of White Bear Lake, Minnesota all the time now, and that when, and you have to go back and watch the ad hoc to get the reference, I'm sorry, it's an easter egg. But we, you know, any city that's going to deploy infrastructure to meet current needs has to look beyond the short term, which is why it's important in the strategy, to look at where we're going in the long term, and how are we going to be able to support it.
I'll add to that, this asset-wide, this organization-wide asset management policy and plan, we have a couple of these metrics that are, you know, you've really sort of got two metrics in there, right? Buried, because it's a fraction, right? So the numerator is important and the denominator is important. Oh, sorry, the, yes, thank you, asset management deferral rate, yes. And so I think that there was a lot of conversation that, you know, it's like when you see an iceberg and you see 10% of it above the water line and 90% of it below the water line, what's, what's being deferred? And there was also, I had a personal particular interest around ADA, right, ADA compliance work that still needs to occur in the city. And that actually feeds into some of our policy conversations that we're eventually going to have around, for instance, if we down the road want to think about building another city hall, because that would impact, it's one of the things that would impact our ADA exposure right now.
Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. So I was also in this ad hoc group, and one of the, one of the things that we talked about in the group was about the definition of core infrastructure and what we mean by both core and infrastructure here. I think it is important that we have that defined, unless I'm missing it, I think it's still not here. And particularly because we have things that are infrastructure in other parts of the plan, so why are we calling this out specifically, and what specifically are we talking about with our asset maintenance deferral rate? What assets specifically would be helpful? And then also, just a comment, I'm not sure if this goal has changed, but the goal, I think, could be written to read more succinctly. I think that just the way the goal reads is a bit confusing, because it's long and it has that word well in the middle, and maybe it needs a comma, but maybe it needs to be maintained to support current and future community needs.
So I heard definition of, a better definition of infrastructure, even if it's like a footnote or explanatory sentence, and attention to punctuation and grammar in the goal.
Yes. Because it is long, and I think it could also just maybe.
I'm not trying to disagree with you, I'm just trying to make sure we heard you.
Yeah. And I'm looking to maybe Emily or David, but I don't think there is, was there, is there a definition that's provided of infrastructure and core, core infrastructure? Okay.
You're going to get back to us on that one.
Yeah, sorry, off mic. David's just looking up, he had done some work, staff had done some work to go back and look at the previous council conversations. So he has a little email that describes that and arrives at the point that we, we think we ended with in terms of the definition for core. We'll look that up really quickly and come back.
And feel free, like, when you want to comment, if you turn your mic on, then I know that you want to comment.
Got it. Fantastic. Looking at the, infrastructure, on the performance measures, it looks like we're looking at maintenance and maintenance deferral. I'm wondering, does that include replacement and lifecycle? Because my question there would be, maybe a performance measure that is, you know, what percentage of our infrastructure is aging or close to the end of its lifecycle? Unless giving us a sense of how much is going to be big costs that need to be addressed.
Yes, is the answer.
It does? Great.
Yeah, it will be all included in that. It's part of all the data that will be necessary in order to arrive at that rate.
And somewhere former council member shares his ears are picking up, because this, this issue, in particular around parks and drainage on fields, was an issue that he championed for many years.
Okay, why don't we move forward? Moving us into growth and development, a favorite topic of lively conversation, this group met twice. And one of the things that we recognize that's in the context of Issaquah and the Seattle metropolitan region is, the region is growing quickly, and there are state mandated growth management rules. And so Issaquah really has to, has to comply with those mandated rules, and that was one of the things that, we had some discussion about whether that was adequately presented. So the goal as proposed is growth is proactively managed, planned, and communicated in a responsible way that retains our strong sense of community and livability. And I feel sort of compelled to say, in the context of, we have to plan for this growth because state law says we have to. Three objectives, we ended up there, protect neighborhood character and effective and forward-looking implementation of plans, as well as the third one that was moved from the other goal, which was infrastructure for planned growth. So protecting neighborhood character was about protecting the things that make Issaquah special. The second one was effective and forward-looking implementation of plans. We had a lot of discussion about this and recognition that Issaquah has a lot of plans, which you have been updating and working on in response to the central Issaquah plan, the moratorium, the remedial actions you had to improve what was happening there. And then this is about proactively making sure we are being effective in implementing those plans actively. And then third, that we are providing the infrastructure for the planned growth, that we're, the infrastructure is keeping up with growth. The performance measures related to growth and development were balanced growth, community livability, and infrastructure investment. So the percentage and ratio of jobs and housing relative to growth targets. Lot of discussion in the ad hoc group about, you've been getting a lot of housing, and maybe jobs aren't happening as fast as the housing is happening, and wanting to really have that balance as planned for, and taking action as you need to, to try and sustain, to keep that balance and then get that balance and keep it there. And residence rating of aspects of community livability by neighborhood. So retaining neighborhood character, we want to know how people feel about their neighborhood character. And then growth-related infrastructure is funded or built versus total identified percent publicly and privately funded. So we want to make sure that building new infrastructure keeps up with and anticipates the mandated and actual growth, and trying to measure whether that's keeping up. So three objectives, protecting neighborhood character, effective and forward-looking implementation of plans, and infrastructure keeping up. Three performance measures, balanced growth, community livability, infrastructure investment. Welcome comments for those around the committee, and then feedback from the rest of the council. of council.
Councilmember Goodman, would you care to take this one? No? Okay. We spent, so I'm the only other ad hoc group member who's here. So we spent quite a bit of time on this one. Actually, we had a sub, I'm sorry. Councilmember Hunt, would you care to take this one? Excellent.
I can start some, some, so I was, I was only in the second part, I was the sub. But I think firstly, the objective two, the, okay, yeah, so I think it is about effective and forward-looking implementation of, of plans. That includes jobs, but it includes more than that. So it includes a number of different sorts of plans and basically is more about following through on, on plans that we have for the future. And then I thought, we had a lot of conversation around the, the objectives in terms of growth and the word targets and what do we mean by target? And my concern in the meeting, and I think maybe it's still a concern, just looking at the number of times the word target appears here, is I just want, in the final version of this, I want it to be clear that we are looking for a future state of the city that has grown, but that has retained, you know, its, its charm and its quality of life and the, and the character. And it's not that we're growing because we are trying to hit a target. So I just want that to not be lost. And we did have a lot of conversation around that. It is a reality that the region is growing, but we aren't growing to grow. And I just want to make that part clear.
And let me add to that. I think we want to be really clear about the use of the word target. Because I think in about three quarters of this, what we mean by targets are the required numbers that are required of us by the Growth Management Act, right? But there is just a few places, like establish interim jobs, housing, and infrastructure targets and goals, where we then change it to be something that we are, that we are internally developing for ourselves. And so I don't know how we want to differentiate those, but most of the time when we use the word targets here, we're talking about the things that we are legally required to plan for. And I, I want to add to that, that this thing about influence future regional growth targets was, I think, one of the strongest things to come out of the ad hoc group. Because I think as they're, the Plan 2050 that's coming up, I think that, I'll say, I want to make sure that we're not penalized for having been good citizens and the growth that we have accommodated. If other municipalities haven't been as aggressively willing to take growth, it shouldn't be that we're all, you know, we re-zero it and everybody gets another 30% or some number, right? Our, our community has done more than our fair share. And so I think that, I think this one as an element is particularly important and timely on this. I'll also mention on the 3D visualization, this goes back to, for, for those who don't know, there was some visualization work done on the central Issaquah Plan. And we saw some sort of visualization of what it looked like in the valley. And I think that it's well past time that we look again at what the assumptions are around the growth that's going to occur in the valley that would allow us to support the current targets that we, that we have on us and whether, how the community feels about that. I think that'll be important implementing this plan going forward.
Councilmember Goodman, anything?
So I was at the first session and couldn't make the second session. And so thank you for, for me. And I think that the, the committee did a, did a really good job of putting this together. I, in the final version, I'm hoping to make it a little more clear that the reality of mandated numbers, the mandated growth, and that we do have a legal responsibility to take a certain amount, amount of growth. And I also want a little bit clearer in here that, not necessarily these words, but I think the community would like us in, always possible to take better charge of our own destiny with relative to growth. And when I read this, I'm not sure I see it as proactive as we possibly could be.
Could you say that last sentence again?
I'm not sure I read in here that, I think we could be, the language could be a little bit stronger about proactivity.
Okay.
A little bit more proactive. And I'm not sure it's as strong as it is. It's kind of, you know, let's make sure we kind of stay pace and keep up and, and infrastructure. And I think we should be a little bit more out in front of it in terms of, like what you said, you know, we have to take-
Okay.
But do we have to, do we have to zero it out?
So the headline says proactive, you're saying that the, some of the other things that are listed could sound more proactive? Fair enough.
Councilmember Hunt?
So I have two more thoughts. One is over there, there's, there was written down this note, should be consistent in our use of the word target. So I think that is part of it, this consistency. But I also just wanted to make it clear that, that, you know, usually if you have a target and you hit the target, then you succeeded. But in this case, that's not the kind of target that we're talking about with the plan. We're talking about hitting a different goal than is actually the target. So I just want to make sure that that's super clear in the final plan for people that are sort of more casual reading it.
Sounds to me like we, we should, not in a public council meeting, but we should have a smart editor try and think up one term to use when we're talking about what, what are they making us do? And another term that we're using one is what do we want to do? And we shouldn't try and, if we're using target for both of those, that's confusing. So I, I hear that. I've, I've heard several people say that. So we, we need to think about that.
Okay. And particularly since the goal says communicated in a responsible way. So, you know, it says that retains, but I, but the word communication is in there. And so this is a document that the public will read and you're right, they should get a sense of, you know, we have responsibilities, but we don't just give up all of our controls. And we have to-
I hear that.
Sorry, and I have one more, one more thing. In the earlier version of this, and I believe it was in the meeting that I was not in on growth and development, there was, in the earlier version that was considered, there was this implemented neighborhood matching grant program to foster small-scale neighborhood-driven enhancement and community building. And that was under objective one about the protecting neighborhood character. So I would suggest and interested in if other people agree, but if, if we are saying these are potential actions, I would be interested in the, the community's input on that one because I think it is something that the community might be interested in. I would be interested in hearing feedback on that one. And I think it's maybe one of our ways that we could involve the community more and communicate in a responsible way. And it, to me, it speaks to a lot of the goals that we have. So I'm, I'm actually not sure, I know a lot of things sort of changed in between versions, but that's one action that I was interested to hear and is very community-driven.
City Administrator Moon?
Yeah, I, I won't speak to the value of keeping it or not keeping it, but I can speak to, I think, the discussion that we had in the ad hoc committee. I think around that particular action item, if I recall correctly, we, we said that we're anticipating bringing that forward as a council conversation, a recommendation from staff. And so we sort of had this conversation about, well then, does it need to live in the strategic plan if you're already planning to do it? You know, regardless of whether it's in the strategic plan. So that's just a little bit of the background.
Well, it kind of gets into then, a lot of these things, if we put them in the plan, then they're going to be things that, I mean, it's kind of horse before, I don't, it's chicken and egg, I guess. But it's, it's one that I thought we might want community input on, and this is an opportunity to get community input. So that's why I thought maybe we could consider me back in.
Councilmember Ray?
So just a couple of thoughts. First, mandated targets that come from outside, I don't think should be germane to our objectives. I think they are constraints that we work within. And our objective is to talk up to what we want to accomplish, not the constraints. And then we work within those constraints. I'm a little concerned when I look at objective two, and then I go back and I look at objective two and three from the, the previous iteration. So objective two in the original or the previous iteration says, "The community shapes plans that guide future growth and understand their connection to the current, to current development." That makes sense to me. That's got a real strong connection to soliciting community, community wants and needs and desires in shaping where we go. And number, objective number three used to read, "Across the city, there are a variety of public amenities, housing types, and services that contribute to the livable community." And I think that captures really well what, what I would like to see, which is we have not only housing types, but we have services that meet the needs of the community. And I, I don't understand, quite honestly, how those two objectives got rolled into objective two as it's currently written. So if you guys have some, some guidance that you can kind of give me how that happened, I'd be really interested to understand the, the thinking that made that happen.
I don't have that level, I'm, sorry, I don't, I don't have that level of detail right in front of me. Brian, do you?
So we spent a lot of time wrestling through what we were trying to do. And there was a lot of the energy was around, are we going out and chasing growth or are we coping with the growth that we're being forced to do? And we spent a lot of time talking about what we're, what level were the objectives at? And, and we spent a fair amount of time talking about, were we talking about, were we dissatisfied with the plans that are currently on the books? Because sometimes it, it seemed like, just the tone of the conversation at times, it felt like maybe we were talking about redoing a bunch of those plans. And we asked ourselves that question. And ultimately, I think we got strong agreement that people are comfortable with the central Issaquah Plan in particular and the basic fundamental notion of directing the mandated growth onto the floor of the valley and protecting the neighborhoods and the hillsides, that that's a strong thing. And the biggest question is, is what is happening in line with what those plans are trying to say? And after a great, stuff is basically saying, we're pretty comfortable with the plans that are on the books, but we're not comfortable with whether or not what's actually happening on the ground is adding up to what those plans were intended to do. And so we wanted to be, as Councilmember Goodman said, more proactive about making sure we're actually getting that balance of growth and that we're protecting character and those things. And that's how that evolved through really a lot of pretty challenging work. And I think it was, we thought that this was more specific because it referenced quite specific plans rather than putting some nice sounding words that were a little hard to define as stated in the earlier version. Anybody, feel free to correct me if I didn't get that right, but that's my memory of how that conversation went.
Council Deputy President Patis?
So not to, to merge this into another, another goal, but in regard to housing types and services, those are areas that are covered under social and economic vitality. So I, I don't know, I just wanted to bring that up. I, I know that those definitely are pieces under growth and development, but in some cases, we may be experiencing overlap where maybe the wording is falling off in one area and being more focused under growth and development, but it's actually showing up in another area. So that was one comment I had. And then another comment that, not to sidetrack this conversation, we can come back to that. But I think with objective two and objective three, that the, I think we've talked about this a little bit, but it seems like they could be worded more inspirationally with the words that are already there put in a completely different order. Because it, it's hard with objectives, I think, to start out with plans are implemented as opposed to, you know, for example, plans are forward-looking and, and getting, getting to the crux of improving livability and the balance of jobs and housing through effective implementation, just like a rewording. So you're not starting with, we're implementing a plan. Because that kind of makes you go, oh, okay.
And I, I hear that. In crafting the objective language, the staff worked really hard to consistently try to describe a future state as the objective as compared to says, "We're going to clean like mad, they said the house is clean." You know, and, and then they tried to be real consistent in that language. And outcome oriented would be another way to say that. Now, that doesn't necessarily, your, your point is also it could be more proactive, but they really, if you look through the whole list, you'll see that they are consistently outcome statements as opposed to activity statements.
Okay.
Councilmember Walsh?
So on that idea, I think Salem did a really good job of talking about desired outcomes. And toward what Councilmember Ray said, I really do think that the language in the previous objective three is much more clear in stating what our desired outcome is. And that is clear for the community. But if we wanted to pull it into some of the work that was done, you could adjust that so that it also talks about a balance of jobs and housing and take it away from some of the services idea, but include a mix of amenities, housing types, and jobs to give us that balance.
All right. David?
Yes, I just wanted to add a couple of additional points on those, the, the first draft, objective two, which was around communication. In the committee, the ad hoc committee, there was quite a bit of discussion in that first meeting about how much of the current growth conversation or issue was a communication issue or not. And I think there were a whole host of opinions about that. And I think the ultimate outcome of that was that we chose to set the, I think the committee said to, to set that aside and let's focus on some of these other elements. There, I think there was quite a bit of conversation about whether or not that was the, the critical thing within that. And then on the objective three under the prior version, that was there. And I think there was some recognition that was a very broad objective. It almost mirrored the, the goal statement, talked about livability, also had some elements in there about services, which potentially overlapped with social and economic vitality as well as other services more broadly. So I think there was some sentiment that was kind of, while it was a good statement, it was very all encompassing.
And it, and was very similar to the goal, actually.
No, it's not. Read the goal and read the statement, they're not at all like, I mean, the goal says, "Growth is proactively managed, planned, and communicated in a responsible way that retains our strong sense of community and livability." And the objective says, "Across the city, there are a variety of public amenities, housing types, and services that contribute to livable community." Those, I can see how accomplishing that goal can be furthered by that objective. I think that's a really good objective. And maybe it's my definition of services, but I consider the gas station, the grocery store, and the cup shop services as well as a service, social services. And if you read social and economic vitality, it talks more to kind of support services. So, you know, we can, I don't, I don't know how we resolve this either. I'm just saying, I like that one, I like that one, I don't like that one. So that's my, my summary of that. And when I say, I like the original two and three. I think number two that we have, objective two that we have right now is extremely myopic and it focuses simply on plans. And we, it's not about plans, guys. It's about creating a community where the people who live here get to shape it. And it's about where people have the services and amenities they need to live here. And so those make a lot of sense to me. This one makes no sense to me.
Okay, well, I, so I think the, the contents of this one, in terms of the language, so you're saying effective-
So, so, so can I, so, so I think the, the, the objective, the second objective, as it was written before, said, "The community shapes plans that guide future growth and understands the connections to current development." And there was a- And there was a lively debate about whether or not we were changing plans, or whether the plans we had were adequate, and the problem was in getting the implementation right. And the ad hoc work group came down on the side of, "The plans we have on the books are very fresh. You just updated them in the last 12 months, and what we need to focus on is trying to get that right and monitor our progress. And if it isn't working right, we need to adjust them." And we were trying to strengthen the statement to be stronger and more specific. And that's why the objective changed into, "The plans we have are implemented," because the debate was about, are they the right plans? And we really, we got far into that. That's how that happened. And then just setting that aside for a second, just to clarify, there's no relationship between the Objective Three that was proposed before and the Objective Three that's proposed now. It's like, I think Councilmember Ray's suggestion would be, we should have four objectives because he likes that other one. I don't want to pit that infrastructure one against the other one because they're just not related.
Absolutely, and just got confusing. No, they're, I just like, like I said, I like the original Objective Two and Three, and I like the new Objective Three.
So, my recollection of a lot of the conversation around the current, the current plans, Objective Two, is that it was really about, that we have a lot of plans that have gone through a lot of community process and have a lot of community input, and that they have been community-focused. So I think for me, it was about following through on those plans in the context of growth in the city. So I think what was sort of lost between versions is that community input, because previously, there was, you know, the community shaping plans, and now that community aspect, that these are community-vetted plans, that the community should continue to be involved in the implementation of plans, and also in changes to those plans over time, or new plans. That community involvement piece has sort of been diminished over the versions. So I think that could be brought back in without making too much of a change to the objective, but I do think it, I think it's got a little bit shuffled out. So I think that that is important. And then, I, my reading of Objective Three about the public amenities, housing types, and services, we will later talk about social and economic vitality section, but listening to that conversation and with that section, it seems like, yes, that is part of growth, but basically, everything in the plan is in the context of growth. Mobility is also in the context of growth. So to me, putting that in that other section would make sense. It could be in either section, but then, you know, really, growth is a reality that affects all of the sections and all of the other objectives.
So I'm not exactly sure what we should do. I hear a substantive disagreement about whether or not we need to include the third objective that was there the first time, in the first round, and a, and a, I feel what feels to me like a, and then it feels to me like the thing that is, in the shift from Objective Two as stated before, and now, maybe the thing that is most sort of sticking point is about actively, the community being actively engaged. And I do remember, we talked about the importance of community engagement in the work group. And I acknowledge, it's not as clearly stated here as we discussed it in the meeting. That's a fair catch. So I guess I'm, maybe as a suggestion to get us, you know, to keep going forward, maybe we put that third objective in for the community input round, and then, you know, suspend this conversation until later as one alternative, much as I hate to be the guy saying, "We have a fourth objective here." And then, you know, I don't, I think intent-wise, figuring out a way to work in the community, active community engagement as part of how we're doing this, I don't think that would be, I think that would be consistent with the conversation that happened in the ad hoc work group.
Council Deputy President Batiste?
Could you read the proposed fourth one more time for me? Thanks.
"Across the city, there are a variety of public amenities, housing types, and services that contribute to a livable community."
City Administrator Moon?
Sure, I was just going to just suggest, there might be a small edit that could then accommodate some of the action or the orientation that Councilmember Ray is talking about. If you wanted to make that change in Objective Two, perhaps you could take the newly proposed language and modify it slightly. "Plans are implemented effectively with regular monitoring, community input, and forward-looking adjustments to improve livability and the balance of jobs and housing." And then perhaps take a couple of the action items that either Councilmember Hunt had said that she was interested in that are about community involvement on CIP and neighborhood enhancements and community building, or some of the other action items that were listed on the previous Objective Two or Three. Instead of adding a whole nother objective, that's just another possibility, is just to add a little phrase in Objective Two that would help accommodate some of the community input pieces that I'm hearing are desired as well.
But I want both. I mean, I want, I want community input for sure, but I also, I believe we have an objective because I have an outcome that I'd like to see, which is that there are a variety of public amenities, there are different housing types, there are services that contribute to a livable community. I think that's, I think that's a significant part of growth. And, you know, quite honestly, one of the things that I have become aware of or noticed is, we've done a lot of growth in one dimension, that is residential, but we have not kept up with our amenities and our services and the things that make for a livable community, and it's starting to have a wear on the community. And I think it's an important part of achieving our growth-oriented goal.
So Councilmember Ray, what I would like to suggest is that we get through the social and economic vitality goal, because both Objectives Two and Three have elements about what you're talking about. And I would like to get through those and see if you still would like to make revisions to these goals once we're through that conversation.
Absolutely. Thank you.
So I would say that we have, as a placeholder, let's do what Council President Martz says, but as a placeholder, we are holding for the moment that we might add the original Objective Three back in. And it seems to me like a really logical edit, what City Administrator Moon said, is adding to the list on the new Objective Two. "Plans are implemented effectively with regular monitoring, community input, and forward-looking adjustments to improve livability and balance in jobs and housing." So it's adding that community engagement piece to that. I think that's a logical edit that picks up that lost piece. That said, I would propose we move forward and then circle back to the, whether that objective gets covered elsewhere.
Council Deputy President Batiste? Nope? All right. Sounds like, sounds like a plan.
Look at us. Social and economic vitality is the next one. So the goal, as proposed in social and economic vitality, is an economically vital and diverse community, is supported by robust businesses, affordable housing, and supportive services. There were four objectives proposed. Living wage jobs, improved services, housing affordability, business growth and expansion. Based on my experience in the last few minutes, I'm going to read those objectives. I think that might be helpful. The first objective is, "There is an increase in local living wage jobs from a mix of businesses." The second one is, "Housing affordability better meets the needs of individuals and families across the income spectrum to live and work in the community." The third one is, "Services and resources are improved to reduce inequities in health and well-being in the community." And four, "There is an increase in new and existing businesses that choose to locate or expand in Issaquah." The performance measures that are proposed here are job growth, business growth, housing cost burden, and access to supportive services. Total jobs, percentage of living wage jobs, total business revenue, percentage of households paying more than 30% of their household income on housing. And one in development with completion by the healthy community strategy is one about supportive services. It was sort of more technical than we could get done now, and there's an effort underway on that. So I'll go back to the four objectives there. Maybe Council President Martz, you would like to make your point again about how you think this might cover what we were just talking about?
Well, I'm going to start with Council Deputy President Batiste.
Thank you. So I think that this really captures what the group talked about, that we really wanted to break this down in terms of focusing on jobs and an increase in living wage jobs coming in. We had much discussion around the businesses that are here and businesses that we would like to attract. And so there was a breakdown between jobs, and even though we do mention from a mix of business in the top objective, number one, and then in number four, we talk about businesses, increasing businesses that are both new and existing. So we're really focusing both on retention and then looking toward companies that may be looking to either locate or they're going to expand here. In terms of housing, that was really focused on being able to have the kind of housing that we need for people to be able to live and work here. So we do cover some of what we talked about in the previous section in terms of housing. Services was focused for the purpose of this conversation on social service type, types of needs, talking about the healthy community strategy and partnering with local nonprofits. So that is a little bit different and less broad than the kind of services that Councilmember Ray spoke about earlier.
Councilmember Ray?
I have two. So I, I'm responding to your question. I'm going to go back, and I think in going through social and economic development, it really doesn't touch on the things that were really, the broad base of things that were talked about in Objective Three in the previous one. So I don't know what we want to do with it, but in my, in my read of Objective Three under growth and development, it really speaks to broader things such as public amenities and not just low-income housing, but variety of housing types and services that make for a livable community. So I think that the things in economic and social vitality are important, but I don't think that they cover what Objective Three did. So that's just my opinion. As Council President Martz always says, it's, I'm just one of seven. Tonight, I'm one of six. So we can do whatever the body is. I have one question about Objective One, and it deals with living wage jobs, because I didn't know what a living wage job was. So I asked David Fujimoto to provide me some data on living wage jobs. And I'm not sure that my read on what a living wage job is and what this objective says are aligned. Because the definition of a living wage job is essentially the very minimum amount of money that you can pay someone so that they can live someplace. That's the definition. David, you're going to have to help me here phoning a friend of living wage jobs. So I want to make sure that that's the intent of this objective, that we're clear on what it is we're saying versus what we really are intending to accomplish here.
And just to kind of add to that, thank you, is the definition of living wage jobs wasn't, there are a couple of different key sources for that, but they do look at things beyond just food for sustenance, which is more like a poverty level. It does include housing costs and childcare and food, and transportation, I think, is the other major category that's included there. So, and it is available at the King County level, and then also at the kind of sub-regional level. And so relates to kind of those costs for different communities. On the east side, for a family of four, it's about $83,000 a year.
So I guess my thinking was on this, and I just want to be clear that we're agreeing to what we're agreeing to, is I think we want to attract jobs that, I actually think we want to attract a variety of different jobs on the economic scale, some of them at the living wage, but some of them higher on the economic scale. And this just says, we're going to increase the number of living wage jobs.
And just to add to that, I think in the connotation here, I think it was thinking about it broadly, so it might be considered a kind of potential friendly edit, might be to consider a range of living wage jobs, or it's kind of that living wage jobs on up, if you will, so it's a larger category.
Yes, we're going to try and attract high-paying jobs and mid-range jobs and living wage jobs.
Correct.
That was, that's my question. And I'd like to hear what others think of that.
Sure. So I've been talking about living wage jobs for 10 years, so it's a very passionate subject to me. Living wage jobs are the jobs that allow you to live in your community, right? So a living wage job in Issaquah is a job that allows you to live on Squawk Mountain, or in Talis, or in the Highlands, right? And we don't have many living wage jobs in this city. We have some. We have the Costco Development Agreement, because that's a rich source of living wage jobs. But we have not enough living wage jobs in this town. And one of the ways, it pairs with, you said low-income housing. It's not low-income housing, it's workforce housing, right? Is what we, I don't know if that's the language we use around housing, but the important point is housing burden, right? And so workforce housing is housing to support the people who work here, right? Low-income housing is something else. I quote, anyhow, point is, I mean, I think living wage jobs in our community, I mean, I think it's well-established what it would mean to have more living wage jobs in this community.
Yeah, and I guess, I think, well, I think that, like you said, you've been doing this for 10 years, and so you have a very strong definition of it. And that's why I did some research on what is the accepted definition of it. And I just want to make, I don't have any problem with that definition, but if I was someone to read this with the textbook definition, I'd come up with a completely different interpretation of what this objective is. And that's, I just don't want us to have misunderstanding, because words carry, words have baggage, and they have meaning, and everyone interprets them differently, and that ability for us to have that shared intentionality of what we're trying to do is really the goal here. And I just want to be clear on it so that we get the outcome that we want, not some other outcome. So that, like I said, I don't disagree with what you're saying at all.
I hear a lot of consistency, and maybe it's going to require a little reworking, but I'm hearing you say, you want to have jobs and housing that allow people that work here to live here. And that, there's a side of that, they got to get paid enough, and they got to have housing that's cheap enough, and they got to, and those things need to fit together. That's, I feel like that's what you're all saying.
Right, I don't think their intent were off-base, or misaligned, but I just want to, you know, so, like I said, I didn't know what the word meant, so I went and looked it up. And when I read what it, what it meant, it was like, huh, that's not what I think we want. And so I want to make sure we put in the word that gets us what we want.
Council Deputy President Batiste?
So I think that there, there may be an opportunity just to add to that, to, I'm listening to Councilmember Ray's point about the actual definition of living wage job, but there may be an opportunity to add some words around a mixture of jobs across the economic spectrum, or something, but keep living wage jobs there. We did have a discussion around, not to get into the action plans, but when we would talk about the kinds of targets that Issaquah, the kind of companies that Issaquah would target, that falls into a variety of categories, including high-tech, which I think would probably end up covering a little bit about what we're talking about. So I believe that there just might be some additional language we could add to kind of cover both, both areas.
I completely agree, Chris. I think we want the same thing regardless of what specific language we use.
Precisely.
Councilmember Good?
Thank you. Does anybody recall what the, what kind of... Does anybody recall what kind of input we got from the community in this area when we were developing this?
Not just at the tip of my tongue. My memory of the survey and the strategic planning charrette, which were both actively engaged about 10 months ago, was that people were really passionate about mobility and about growth and development. And this object, or this goal, this priority area was added during the council process afterwards. It wasn't what people showed up at the meeting to talk about. So I wouldn't say nobody spoke against it, it just wasn't the thing that drove people to the meeting, that's my memory of.
Councilmember Walsh.
Mind if I move on to another objective? Okay, fantastic. Objective Three to me on the social services and human services reads a little bit clunky, and I think the word improved doesn't really speak to it. So I would appreciate rewriting that in a way that really talks about our desired outcomes. Families are supported by coordinated and centralized social services, you know, something to that realm that really talks, what do we want to see? Maybe it's just that we're not at a level that we can accomplish that in a five-year range, and that's why this is here, but I feel like there's something lacking in this area.
Almost seems like you could take out three words, or you could just say services and resources reduce inequities in health and well-being in the community.
Well, I personally agree with that. I think maybe making that more about the outcome that we're looking to get to would be helpful. I also wondered about Objective Four and Objective One. So Objective One, and partly I'm wondering about this because I do think that this is one of the areas overall that we had less community input on, and it also has more objectives than I think any of the other ones currently. We're contemplating putting a fourth one in growth, but right now I think this has the most. And that also has for performance measures. So looking at it that way, I wonder about having a separate objective for businesses and then a separate objective for jobs. I mean, clearly they're related, and in fact, the jobs one talks about from a mix of businesses. So I wonder if we could put those together. They seem very connected to me.
Council Deputy President Batiste.
So Councilmember Winterstein is not here this evening, and that we had a fair amount of discussion about exactly what you just spoke about, Councilmember Hunt. Being able to really focus on what we thought one of the top components was really to be able to increase the number of jobs. But there was also a fair amount of discussion around everything that we need to do to get there, but it really had to be focused on the businesses. And we do have a really diverse mixture of businesses within Issaquah. We have a lot of very small businesses, and there's a whole piece around retention and supporting of startups and that kind of thing, as we also have major employers and then different clusters and groups that we are looking to target. And as we spoke more and more about it, it seemed to logically break apart. And Councilmember Winterstein did feel very passionately about number four. So I just wanted to point that out.
I had a thought, as this conversation has been evolving in the last hour. I feel like every one of these priority areas or goal statements would be well-served with a paragraph of three, four, five sentences that says something about the context and the issues and provides some language. And I'm struggling with the comment, what do we mean by living wage jobs? And it seems like you just kind of want to say something about, you ought to be able to, you know, work here and live here. And it doesn't lend itself to trying to write a short objective that's easy to put on a list in a succinct number of words. I almost wonder if we would, if the whole thing would be better if we just crafted kind of a context statement under each of these, that basically the goals and the objectives are there, but it sort of explains the context that they're in, so it helped us all kind of, I just, I thought that might be helpful.
Here's my reaction to that. With some of these priorities, I think you saw a common vision between the three council members. And so when you heard the elevator pitches, you got the same, essentially the same elevator pitch, three different types. Other priorities, you got three completely different elevator pitches.
True story.
And so my concern, and you're basically talking about sort of putting together the elevator pitch. And I have a concern that in those areas where these represent a, you know, what's the least, I want to say least bad outcome, but you know, where it was, there was some horse trading and some shoehorning of people's ideas into what we eventually came up with. I worry that you're just sort of, might reopen that.
There's potential for that. My thinking, though, is just this thing that was right here about what do we mean by affordable and livable, you know, and it's trying to connect living and working in Issaquah, and I don't, any disagreement about that. Similarly, there was stuff in growth and development about, you know, the plans, we want to protect the neighborhoods, we want to make sure that the plans are being built, we want to engage the community, we want to make sure that things happen the way we said that they were going to happen. And it's almost like you could write a little narrative about that that everybody could live with, and we still probably debate the objective some, but I was just trying to give it a little bit of, certainly one of the things in growth and development was about, do we want the growth or not? And I mean, you made a great, Council President Martz, you made a great sort of, in the meeting, you talked about, you know, if we didn't have the Growth Management Act, we'd have development, you know, all the way up to the summit, you know? And so if we're not going to have development all the way to the summit, we got to have it somewhere. And you were basically giving the context for the Growth Management Act, and some kind of statement about this is the environment we live in would help everybody understand why we're making these statements. I thought that might be helpful. It does, you know, those sentences then become subject of debate, so you're right, it does open a can.
Councilmember Walsh.
I think Tacoma does a great job of providing a context paragraph within each of their goal areas.
Exactly.
And I could see that doing a great job in clarifying here for us. But going back to this Objective One and Objective Four, both being focused on businesses in different forms, one, living wage jobs, the other one, businesses, I just want to think through what is the outcome we're trying to achieve? Is it adding businesses? Is it enabling businesses? Is it creating jobs? I think the actions under both of these are fantastic, but if there was a way to thread together both of the objectives for that idea of an outcome and keep the actions, I would be in support of that.
So I think the reason they are two separate objectives is because they are really fundamentally focusing on different things, right? The first really is about the people who work here being able to live here, and the people who live here being able to work here. The second is about, in the same way that we need to provide services and support for our residents, we need to support, we need to provide service and support for our businesses. And so it's just a fundamentally different set of, it's a different priority. It's saying that our businesses are constituents of ours, just like our residents. Okay, Councilmember Goodman.
So Objective One, the living wage jobs one, and then Objective Four, an increase in new and existing businesses. So if we, setting aside for a moment how much this priority is community-driven, because I question that a lot, not that some of it's not important, that's not what I'm saying, but is, if we were to accomplish Number Four, maybe with one or two additional words, doesn't that necessarily accomplish Objective One?
I think the notion, I mean, you could certainly write it so that they were both accomplished in the same objective, it would be putting two different kind of points in the same place. But I think the point was Costco could add 500 jobs, and 100 businesses with five employees could close, and Issaquah would have the same number of jobs. Would it be a better community or not? I mean, it's sort of the, you know, the jobs is one point and number of small businesses is another point. And I think that was the nature of, that the conversation in the work group was both the number of jobs and the number of businesses were important.
So let me try to answer differently. On Objective Number Four, so my son works at Chipotle. It's a great job for an 18-year-old who's in high school. It's not a living wage job. The person who owns Chipotle, the person who owns any other restaurant or small business in Issaquah deserves support from the community. That's different than looking for living wage jobs.
So maybe I'm miscommunicated. I said if we tweaked Number Four, that could absorb Number One. Because if you increased or expanded a variety of types of businesses in Issaquah, then you're also going to get a variety of wage levels.
Doesn't, we have a number of businesses that don't provide living wage jobs currently.
Yeah, but I know, but I'm not, I'm not talking about a subset. I'm talking about if you had a variety. Because that's, because what we're saying in Number Four is we want more businesses here, and so if we said more and more variety, different types of businesses with different levels of wages, then that takes care of Number One. So, and I'm not sure we're going to solve this tonight. We're going to go back out to the community. Point.
I'd like to reinforce that point, that maybe there's a couple of these things that we should get the community input and then come back and have it out on these.
So let me say something that's going to anger some of my fellow council members, but I'm going to say it anyhow. I want community input, but I also believe that living wage jobs are important. I ran on it 10 years ago. I got 60% of the vote, my opponent got 40% of the vote. I have said it's important for a decade. It's going to get an objective from, that objective is going to get my support regardless of what gets said in the next month, and I will be less likely to support this plan if it isn't in there, because I've been very clear about it, and I've been able to be on council three times, and I'm sorry to throw that down, but it's critical to why I sit, I have been sitting on the dais for nine years.
I don't think, it certainly doesn't make me angry, but we also said that it was going to be a community-driven plan. So that's part of the equation here.
In the subgroup, Brian said this is why we run for office, right? Is because we believe that we will synthesize leadership that reflects the values of our community. And I know, I also know from running for the U.S. House of Representatives two years ago, that living wage jobs, that housing burden is a huge issue everywhere in King County and out in De Kittin, Tass, and Chelan. If we don't hear it in this outreach that we do in the community, I'm just saying, that isn't a reason to get rid of it. It's, I just know it's important.
No, but going back to Councilmember Ray's point, it is, it is a reason to be careful about what we put in the objectives. And so if there's a, if there's concern that one is maybe too narrow, that maybe we want to accomplish more than what Number One says, and we can do that by combining, nobody is saying that it's not important at all. But I think there's more, there's more that goes into the plan, there are more factors that go into the plan than just what you ran on and what you feel and what you're passionate about. We all have our own feelings and our own passions, but the plan is supposed to be basically community-driven. And so to the extent that we can improve in objectives and make it a better strategic plan, I think that's what people are talking about.
Council Deputy President Batiste.
I think in the, in the meeting when we were, when we were talking about that, we, things started to get, as we started to think about action plans and that kind of thing, I think that there, a big piece of the reason that they're broken apart is that there are different kinds of ways you can go and different action plans to accomplish those two. I'm not saying that they can't be tied together, because I think that was part of the conversation as well. But, but there really was, I think because we have so many small and small employers and startups and sole proprietors and that kind of thing, and I'm sure every city has something similar, but it just started to develop down two different pathways with two different sets of action plans, which I believe is the reason that they're broken apart.
So I hear no disagreement that what you mean by living wage is being able to afford to live in Issaquah. And maybe we should edit the language to make that a little more clear, because I think that was one bone of the way it was written. I didn't hear any pushback on that. That seems like a good edit. I hear debate about whether or not there should be two objectives about jobs and businesses. I hear Council President Martz and Council Deputy President Batiste feeling pretty passionately that there are two. I guess my question would be, could the rest of you live with that for the purposes of community input for now?
Councilmember Hunt.
I just have a point of clarification, I guess. So under Objective One, because we were talking about what separates them is maybe the actions. I read the actions under Objective One both about recruiting employers. So it's both about recruiting, it's about increase new and existing businesses. So to me, the actions seem to dovetail quite well with some wording changes under Objective Four. So I, you know, a lot of these could be split into different things throughout the plan, but I think a lot of them, you know, there's all kinds of ways to word things. And I, to me, the actions in particular give me a reason to think that it's going to be merged with Objective Four.
The answer is you can't live with it the way it is. You want to see it merged.
I didn't say I can't live with it. I just, I think it would be, I think my preference would be to get community input on a objective around a more holistic jobs, businesses objective, but I'm open to other people. I'm not saying I can't live with something. I'm open to hearing what other people said. My preference would be to get community input on a increasing businesses that provide living, provide jobs that allow people to live in the community, you know, without being house burden, cost, house of living burdened.
Before I go to Councilmember Ray, I think part of the challenge is that Objective Four, the language of the objective is, I think, is maybe not exactly aligned with the proposed action items in it, right? The action items in it are really around the thing that I said about, in the same way that our residents want services and amenities, so too our businesses want services and amenities. And so it's expand small business and startup training and development, conduct a review of city permitting to provide consistency and predictability for businesses. But I get that the objective says increase in new and existing businesses, right? So I would agree that there is a disconnect between those two, and that if you say there's an increase in new and existing businesses, and Objective One is there's an increase in local living wage jobs, I get that those two things sound a lot more similar. But I really do believe that in the ad hoc group, we were trying to say that one was about jobs and the other was about supporting our existing businesses. And I don't know exactly what we want to say around objectives, but I think that was the intent. Councilmember Ray?
I think they're different thoughts. I think Objective Four is about attracting new businesses and expanding existing businesses within the city. I think Objective One goes someplace different, which is, we want to attract businesses and jobs that vie at a sufficient wage that people can live here. And I think we want to do both. I mean, I think we want to attract some businesses that are not going to be paying wages that will allow someone to live here. I mean, I think there's just things that we need in this community that we want to attract that are never going to pay the, you know, the $80,000. attract that are never going to pay, you know, $80,000, $100,000, $120,000 a year that it's going to require for someone to live in this community. And I think that's okay. I don't think every job we attract to the town has to be a job that's going to hire people who could live in the town. So I see them as completely, I mean, not completely different thoughts. I see them overlapping, but I think they're discreet, and I think we want to do both.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman.
Council Deputy President Baptiste.
Just as we're sort of closing this out, I thought it might be good to provide a couple of examples about some of the things that we talked about in regard to these two objectives. On Objective 4, we, I think we talked a little bit about, but we have startup training. There's a group called 425 that is completely focused on giving all the resources that you need to start up a new business. And so that was kind of the smaller employer and servicing and providing retention. But then, in regard to Objective 1, we talked about commercial space availability. And if there was a large employer that was looking to come into Issaquah, would we have a place for them to go? So the, I thought maybe by providing those two examples, it would help sort of clarify why, because at one point, we were kind of talking about these together, and then, like I said, they just sort of diverged on two different pathways. I still feel like they're two meaningful objectives that should stay broken apart.
My suggestion is the way you're going to get out of here tonight is if we leave it as four objectives for now and leave open the possibility of refining when we come back from the public input. And Councilmember Hunt, you sounded like you would put up with that if you had to.
Are we generally okay with that? Mike.
Oh, sorry. I don't know, are we moving on? Because I do have some other comments.
Okay, why don't you make the other comments?
Okay. So I don't, I'm not sure how much we talked about Objective 2, but I think for the purposes of, if we are putting these actions out to the public, Action C on Objective 2 is evaluate options and ramifications of prioritizing city property assets for affordable housing needs. I think we need to be much more clear about what evaluate options and ramifications of prioritizing, like what, there's a lot of sort of thoughts in there. So I just, I would like to, if this is going out for a comment, make that clear for what we mean. And then, and then Objective 3, I kind of wanted to hear from the committee about that one, because I think we have focused on the economic Objective 1 and Objective 4 and less so on this Objective 3. I don't think we've really talked about it. So I wondered if the committee or the ad hoc group could talk about that one.
Sure. Can we first start with, on Objective 2, this evaluate options and ramifications? Could we either have Director Fujimoto or City Administrator Moon talk about that a little more? Explain the thinking on that one?
Sure. I think that particular one was understanding that with housing affordability, affordable housing projects, one of the most difficult challenges with projects is land costs. And cities have access to land which might be available for uses, but there hasn't been a policy conversation on best uses for lands that might be feasible for those kinds of purposes. Some of those things were pointed out in some of the conversations, for example, of Microsoft's interest in working with cities on the east side and whether or not they could do those kinds of things. We have not done that in Issaquah and looked at all those different properties and assets. This is not looking at things like open spaces or lands that were required for other purposes. There's just probably a few lands the city owns where this might be taken into consideration.
Councilmember Hunt, is there a better way of describing that? Do you want to see a better way to describe that, or is that?
I think so. I mean, I think that having more context around what we mean by that would be helpful. So maybe it's just a footnote or what you said in some form.
To make it less vague. Yep.
City Administrator Moon?
So in a nutshell, I think we're ultimately trying to determine if city property should be used for affordable housing. So that's one way, just to clarify, we have to do all these things like evaluate options and discuss ramifications of saying that we are going to prioritize city property for affordable housing, but ultimately, it's just determine if city property should be used for affordable housing.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, a lot of these actions do have that component of evaluating the options and the ramifications of prioritizing this action and doing this thing, but we can just make it more clear to the public what we're talking about doing in the action and skip that part, and then get comments on the action itself.
Sounds like a variant of what you just said would make that more clear.
I hear good support for just leaving it there, but making the language a little more clear.
But, Councilmember Ray?
But I'm going to rewind this a little bit. This is why I'm afraid of publishing the actions with the plan, because we have not vetted the actions, we have not wordsmithed the actions. They can be interpreted 100 different ways, and that doesn't help us at all. And I, if we're going to put those out, they all need to be scrubbed, not just this one. So.
Fair point.
I have a concern.
Let's come back to that. We got two more goals to go through. Let's get there and then come back. We, that's a fair point, but let's.
So to answer Councilmember Hunt's question, and maybe David can chime in here as well. But basically, this objective is to, is focused on improving services and resources. So when we look across the broad spectrum of human services, that there's an increase in awareness, that barriers are broken down, that there's a focus on transportation, all of the things that an individual would need to be able to access. And as we talk about things in human services, there are always improvements that can be made. We don't have all of the resources that people need here in Issaquah, and a lot of them are focused regionally. So allowing, focusing on improvement in those areas better meets the needs of the residents that are here in Issaquah. And as we go forward and adopt and implement the healthy community strategy, then we'll have much more information about what some of those gaps are. And then continuing to work with nonprofit organizations, so our partnerships are strong. And if there are services that aren't available in our area, that we're supporting and getting all of the information out so people can get where they need to go. When we merged economic vitality and, you know, we put the word social and economic vitality, so it was services sort of across the spectrum. And so this was the piece that was broken out, that was just focused on services, which sort of speaks to Councilmember Ray's earlier question. It really wasn't a full gamut of services, and we also have the word social in front of economic vitality. So as I'm just kind of thinking it through, I'm not sure that that, what you're talking about, really fits here. We would have to sort of realign the title. I hope that helps.
Yes, thank you. So we're going to talk in one of the next slides about the city leadership and services. My thought is that the city's role is also reflected in the city leadership and services part. It seems like there's overlap there. So I would just like to, when we get to that part, we can revisit it, but it seems like there's definitely an overlap and maybe there's opportunity to consolidate some of that, because the city leadership and services also has the services and it has a similar equity lens to what's, to how I read this Objective 3.
May I suggest that we go through the other two goals and see where we are?
Take 30 seconds before we move on. So, I don't like to be grumpy and I wear my heart on my sleeve. Let me try to better answer the question around community engagement and workforce housing. In the most recent National Citizen Survey for the city of Issaquah, our lowest score was in traffic flow, but our next lowest score was in affordable quality housing. And also housing option, which was at 20%, believe that we are either excellent or good in that area. Housing options was at 44%. It is certainly my hope that as we go out to the community, we continue to see that level of interest from the community on affordable housing. All right, and, sorry, workforce housing. There. Now we can move on.
All right. Let's move on, look at the other two goals, and then we can revisit. I think we have two questions that I'm hearing lingering, like that we, is, or maybe three. Do we have Objective 4 on growth and development? That was a question that we were going to come back to. I want to check in again on my notion of having a context statement in each of these. And then the other question is, do we include the actions when it goes out? Those are three questions that are on the table. But let's do the other two and then come back to those. So, environmental stewardship. The goal that you approved months ago was environmental resources are proactively enhanced, protected, and stewarded. There were three objectives: protect and improve, active partners in community stewardship, and strategic land acquisitions. Let me read those objectives as presented out of the small groups. Our natural environment is protected and improved in a consistent, responsible, and sustainable manner. Two, community members are active partners in the stewardship of Issaquah's environment. And three, the city has acquired strategic lands for park trail, open spaces, critical areas, and natural resource protection to maximize community benefits. So one about actively protecting improvement, two about getting people involved in that activity, and three about acquiring strategic lands. The performance measures, which had a robust and educated discussion about what they should be. One was about forest health, the metric in development through another process. A second one about natural area restoration and protection, the quantity and percentage of natural areas that are restored and protected. And community stewardship, the amount of community participation in environmental stewardship activities. So does somebody that was on that small group want to speak to where we came at on environmental stewardship?
Councilmember Hunt.
All right, I will start. So we talked a lot about the, firstly, about the sort of changeable nature of environmental resources and conservation, and what does it mean to be stewards? And so we did narrow it down into these sort of areas of objectives where we want to have the environment improved, but we also want to have community support as something that we care about on its own, on its own merit. And then, community involvement, community partnership. And then this last piece about the acquisition and community benefits from that acquisition. And then, also with the metrics, so we talked a lot about needing metrics that we, because ecological systems change over long time scales potentially, and things like forest health, we didn't expect to have an update on, in a manner that would actually allow us to measure change or progress or degradation on the time scale that we would need to check in on the strategic plan. So we left that sort of as a placeholder, and it looks like it's still a placeholder. So, and then, I have two thoughts on the current draft. So the first one is, one, part of our conversation was around this word, resources, environmental resources, and it was changed in Objective 1 to natural environment, because resources sounded maybe like something that we're being, maybe something that we were using or had the potentially wrong connotation. So we talked about changing that, and we did change that in Objective 1, but because the goal had been previously established, it still appears in the goal. So one thing would be to consider putting in our natural environment as protectively enhanced and stewarded instead of environmental resources. And then, and then, let's see, oh, my other thought was, we have these performance metrics, forest health, which is still in development, which we don't really expect to be able to measure on the time scale that we need. And then natural area resource and protection and community stewardship. So I, in thinking more about this, one of our environmental stewardship things that's really important, I think, are salmon and having salmon habitat. And so I would suggest something around salmon for one of our performance metrics, also because it touches on a different aspect of environmental stewardship, having to do with water and riparian area habitat. And so it's sort of a different angle, but it is something that the community cares a lot about. We have salmon days and a lot of our community identity around salmon. So I thought maybe we put that in as a performance measure also, because otherwise we would only have two.
Councilmember Ray?
So when we had the meeting and we were talking about a number of things, particularly environmental stewardship, I did get to use the word zeitgeist, because it is very much who we are. And it's the spirit of Issaquah's around, you know, this environmental stewardship idea. And you'll notice if you want, we did a little bit of objective compression, too. We brought four down to three, trying to focus on the things that were most important.
Council Deputy President Baptiste.
I think Councilmember Hunt has given a really good overview about what we talked about in environmental stewardship, and I would agree with the addition having to do with salmon.
I'll plus one on the salmon as well.
Do I venture to say everybody's comfortable with this if we had a performance metric on salmon? Awesome, moving on.
Wait, no. Councilmember Walsh, did you have a, you had to turn that mic on?
The only thing that's coming out at me here is Objective 2 being about community members are active partners. Reading over the whole thing, I'm not sure why this shows up in the environmental stewardship area, when I would expect that the community members would be active participants and engaged in all of these areas. So maybe somebody can explain why that came up here, but it seemed a little bit surprising to me.
Councilmember Hunt?
Yes. So we talked about this because of that reality. The community is engaged in, part of our goal around this whole plan is that it is a community-driven plan and that there's community engagement in all of the areas. And then also, as I think you were saying, that community is engaged in environmental stewardship. But I think we, when we talked about this, so one of our challenges as a city is that we have a lot of open space and natural resources and basic species issues and a lot of park lands, et cetera. And so we have a lot of challenges where the city could benefit from having the community engaged and partnering with the city to better meet some of our objectives. And so I think part of our conversation was around having that partnership fostered between the city and people so that there was that synergy. And then, and then we also talked about whether it was, whether it should be part of Objective 1, that, and then ultimately, the group decided that having the community actually active participants and having that ownership was an end to itself. And so it ended up being separate in this case.
Councilmember Ray?
And just to amplify what Councilmember Hunt just said, one of the things we heard at the charrette when we were breaking this one down was a lot of information about people wanting to be engaged in environmental stewardship. So there was, it was the, it was the public that was calling this to our attention more than us calling it to theirs.
Anything else? Yep. All right. Okay, move on.
Can I make one quick comment?
Sure.
So on the, the suggestion on the salmon for as a performance indicator, salmon are in salmon are an indicator species, so they work really well for that on a broad scale. But in our kind of watershed in our basin that there, it is heavily influenced by the fish hatchery as well as other activities elsewhere. And so, you know, in consideration of the context of kind of looking at forest health, one consideration might be thinking about stream and lake health. And that could be broken down in a way that's more digestible and understandable than kind of wonky parameters. And so, that might just be a consideration.
So, and I, I had a, another thought, too, on the salmon, which, so I don't think it necessarily needs to be number of salmon, you know, there's tons of factors that influence that. But I think we could think of a performance measure around our stewardship that supports salmon. So, maybe it's habitat, restoration work, or something like that around salmon habitat. But I think something around salmon. But yes, there's, there's lots of factors that influence salmon returns and that without context is not necessarily indicative of how well we're doing on these other things.
More of an overall title that might measure some other parameters related to it.
Yeah, I think we could think of, I think we can come up with a meaningful way of measuring our contribution to salmon recovery.
I heard a lot of support for that from the rest of the council. So, one more goal, city leader.
I just want to point out, it's not Repairing Environment Days, it's Salmon Days.
One more goal, city leadership and services. The goal that you approved some time ago is leadership and accountability is provided in the delivery of public services for our growing and diversifying community. And as worked on by the small group, two objectives, meaningful and inclusive civic engagement and high-performing systems for effective service delivery. The first objective, the city is actively sustaining and equitable and welcoming city government, embracing diversity and fostering meaningful, inclusive, and varied civic engagement. Objective two, the city is utilizing high-performance internal systems to effectively and efficiently serve the Issaquah community. My memory is that there was a discussion about whether or not we needed the goal at all. And ultimate conclusion that it was appropriate to, that there be a goal that talked about the importance of, of the city doing its job well as a city government, that citizen engagement was very important, and that the quality of the systems of the internal operation was an important objective to put out there. It's important because you need that to serve the, the whole rest of the plan, is you need that efficient system in support of the city staff to achieve the rest of the plan. The performance measures identified were community satisfaction and community engagement. Community satisfaction with city services, performance on key organizational service metrics, and composite measurement of engagement in key program areas to be identified in detail. Anybody from the work group want to comment on the objectives or the performance measures?
Councilmember Ray.
I, I think Brian, you did a great job of some, of actually summarizing the discussion. There was some discussion about whether or not we needed to have this one at all. We started with four objectives. We combined two of them that were, were both related to how we engage with the community and turned that into objective one. We, we scrapped a objective four that dealt with financial management of public resources because we really felt that that was very operational in nature and not necessarily something that rose to the level of a strategic objective. But we really focused in two areas. One was around, are we engaging with our community in a way that is meaningful for them? So, that meeting people where they are regardless of their socioeconomic status or, or background. And then also, the second one was, as David, or Brian said eloquently, it was, we have to have the systems in place and invest in those systems so that we can do anything else on this plan.
So, I have a question around, on the community engagement performance metric, composite measurement of engagement in key programmatic areas to be identified. So, so more is better, yes. I just don't under, I just, it'll be interesting to see how that will get defined. Is there, is there an ICMA, are there ICMA standards around this?
I think that's what meant, what is meant by that is that we have a variety of questions on the survey instrument that are about engagement. And so, we'll look at kind of combining them to give a kind of a whole picture of how well we're doing on that and how satisfied a community is with, with that engagement.
So, that community satisfaction, I get that that, you could get that from the NCS data. But the community engagement doesn't seem like something you would get from the NCS data.
We do, we do. We ask a variety of questions about the way in which people are involved in the community. And those are good indications of how well-connected people feel, what sort of social capital you're building in your community, how accessible the local government might be. So, there are a bunch of things that we can learn from it and we do ask a variety of questions about how people are involved within the community.
Okay. I just, I wish there was, I wish there was also a way to get some objective data, right? Like, how do we, like, how is our engagement from the community at city council meetings and in committee meetings and, and the amount, it's always staggering to me when I see how small the numbers are for people who watch us on ICTV and those sorts of things. And it would be nice to, it's good to get this, and what you're describing is good, too. But I, I wish we could also get some objective data and then also trend that data over, over time to see if what we're doing increases it or not. But, Councilmember, oh, no, all right, Councilmember Hunt.
So, I, my recollection of the conversation that led to performance measure number two is, is basically very similar to what you were asking. Because I was asking around, could we get numbers of how many people are in different programs and how many people are in need of services that are actually accessing those city services? And what, what are the engagement numbers in different areas? And some sort of Venn diagram of the population overall and how much people are interacting with. So, we had a diagram of, of what this might look like. But it was actually pretty objective, but I think it's hard to, it, it doesn't come through actually in the written form maybe. So, so maybe it could be clarified what we're, what we mean by that.
Yes. Thank you for the memory refresher, too. Yes, we did discuss that and I drew that little Venn diagram to show. And absolutely, we can do that. That could be a piece of this is to take a few samples of where people are engaged and look at that level of engagement and how that might be changing over time in those areas where we have interest, whether that's engagement at a council meeting, engagement in neighborhood meetings, engagement in our program. So, we had discussed that as, as a piece to this measure. And I think we're going to try to achieve both those things that I talked about, kind of measuring the level of activity and involvement and engagement. And then, also, we had these other National Citizen Survey questions that show kind of across-the-board engagement in the community in other ways, ways that aren't even about city services and programs.
Okay. Well, I, I would just add that my motivation for wanting that community engagement performance measure is, is that it would be something that is more objective and is something more that we can measure a change without, without it being based on the community satisfaction, which is one that's on all of these different, I think, community satisfaction overall is important, but that's influenced by lots of things. So, to, to have a more objective measure about community engagement would be helpful in tracking how well we're doing on this one.
Councilmember Walsh.
So, I actually, I think I want both. I want a sense of, you know, are we welcoming resident involvement? And, you know, do we create that welcoming area in our city leadership? As well as, are people accessing the services that they want? And I noticed on Tacoma's plan, they note only 49% reported access to public information positively and 39% thought city government was welcoming resident involvement. I assume they got that from some sort of survey, so those types of things might be. But I think that information is accessible and city government is welcoming speak toward one realm different from service engagement.
Anything else? Nope. All right.
Okay, so, we've gotten through the, the plan. We have the goals and objectives headings as we started out, you know, on this list. I have three, I guess, let's, let's address the questions we had lingering. And then, then where we're going is I want to, you know, get us to the place where we're comfortable with this collection of goals, objectives, and measures. And then, I'm going to ask you in a few minutes if you feel that you can support this draft, kind of an indication of your sense of comfort with the whole thing. And if you could feel comfortable explaining them to the community, I'll ask those in a minute. But the three questions lingering from the discussion are, do we add a fourth objective to growth and development? Do we add context statements? And do we include the potential actions in what goes out to the community? Let's take those one at a time. So, in growth and development, there were three objectives proposed. We made a couple of minor edits to them, but they, the three objectives were protect neighborhood character, monitoring and making sure we're being effective in implementing the plans that we have and that infrastructure is being planned and keeping up with growth. And then, there was a question of, do we add for the purpose of the community input a fourth objective, which would be across the city, there are a variety of public amenities, housing types, and services that contribute to a livable community. So, that would be my question, is do we add that objective to this list?
Councilmember Ray is the person who first suggested this.
I, I still think, you know, we, we put it on the back burner pending the discussion of the other areas, particularly social and economic vitality. The key points that I saw in that objective when I raised it for growth and development weren't, they were, you know, kind of bumped against with social and economic vitality. But I still think that there are significant attributes to that objective that I think are important to this community and belong with growth and development.
So, I, I would support that. I actually, I think of the context of this whole activity this evening, I was worried that maybe we would come out of the ad hoc groups and that we would explode, and once we got to a larger group, explode the number of goals or objectives like, like triples, to use a Star Trek reference. And the fact that we haven't, the fact that we're only talking about adding potentially one, I, I think that's fine and see how it, see how it goes as we engage the community. Councildeputy President Patisse.
So, I would support adding the fourth objective now that we've talked through the, the other, where, where everything is bumping up against each other. It, it's not covering the, the area, it's not adequately covering that area, especially in regard to services and amenities. That's something very different than we talked about. So, I would support that. And then, I just wanted to point out that we were also going to add the language about community.
Yes. Yeah, I didn't say it back to you, but yes, we were going to add into the second objective, we were going to edit the, the objective that up here says effective and forward-looking implementation. We were going to edit that objective to say plans are implemented effectively with regular monitoring, community input, and forward-looking adjustments to improve livability and the balance of jobs and housing. That edit was adding community input to that. And I, I heard broad consensus on that, so I figured that was a done deal.
Councilmember Goodman.
I'd support adding it.
I think, I think we have broad agreement that we're going to add that objective. Second question, I made a recommendation along the way. And let me just say that this is my recommendation. This isn't coming from community process. It's coming from my observation of the conversation we've been having for several weeks. I think your plan would be easier for all of you to explain and digest in your community to get what you're talking about if we added a context statement, the observation that it's similar to the statements that's under the goals in that Tacoma plan that we sent you an example of. It is quite similar to that. I wrote those statements, so I remember doing that a few years ago. And that we write a statement that, that basically provides a little bit of context and nuance to what's stated in those objectives. And in terms of process, my recommendation would be that you empower the consultants and the staff to craft that statement for sort of Emily's approval, that it can go out to the community for the purpose of the community dialogue and that we don't have to have another council meeting to wordsmith those paragraphs. That would be my recommendation and I'm open to your consideration.
What's Councilmember Hunt?
So, firstly, I am supportive of having the context paragraphs. I think that in looking at the other strategic plans, both Salem, so Salem has these opportunities and challenges. And then Tacoma has opportunities, which is sort of another, I think, I think in all of these areas, we would benefit from having something like the problem statement, what we're trying to address and the context around it. And there is a lot of discussion that's gone into all of these. And it, especially with, for somebody with fresh eyes looking at this for the first time, I think it would be very helpful to have some context around the discussions to make it clear what the different words mean, why we're talking about things in certain ways. And just to, to try to start from the same sort of common grounds going into then the objectives and the, the other areas. And we've also had a lot of discussion even tonight around the different, what do we mean by different terminology? And so, just having that context, I think, would help set us up in a, in a more broader sense that we all know overall what we're, what the framework is. So, I'm supportive and I, in particular, like the, I think it's Salem that has the challenges framing.
Councildeputy President Patisse.
I think the more information, the better. And, and, and being able to add some context statements, I, I think is helpful, especially as this goes out to the community and giving just a little more context to what we've been talking about. So, I'm supportive of that.
Councilmember Hunt.
I just wanted to add one thing. So, you also said about not having another meeting on it. I think that I am comfortable with that. I, I do think, though, we need to see them before they go out just to make sure that council, I would be much more comfortable if council had opportunities to see that and see the plan in the next version before it goes out.
So, Emily, how would that work? I just, let me, I'm, I'm.
If you have the same question I do, I'm not sure how that would work.
I know how to work.
Councilmember Ray.
So, I, I like the idea of the more context setting. I don't know that we have to do an edit on it, but I want to see it. I would like, I, me personally, would like to see whatever is going out before it goes out. So, at least I know what was sent out. So, if there's any, any kind of comment or feedback, you know, it's, it's not coming in cold. I'm not, I don't think we want to go through another edit exercise.
So, that sounds entirely reasonable. My question is, so you see it and the third sentence on the fourth context statement bugs you.
No, we, I mean, I don't believe we have, well, we have the time if we wanted to. I don't know that we need to take the time to go through another iteration of review, but I, I want to see it before it's distributed.
Councilmember Hunt, I think you were suggesting that we review it before it goes out.
Well, I don't, I also, I agree. I mean, if I have a problem with the wording on sentence four of the context statement for objective, for goals three, I'm not, I, I'm not proposing that we all send in specific edits. But I, I also, because this is new, it was proposed this evening, we hadn't thought about it before, they'll be completely new to us in the context statements. And they're about conversations that we've been having with the community. So, I would just like to see them before they go out, just to make sure that they meet my.
I think you seeing them first is a reasonable request. My, my question is, if you don't like them, the question is, you know, does Emily have the authority to, you know, I, I'm just, I'm just trying, I don't want to violate public process. I just want to make sure we're. just want to make sure we're doing something that's appropriate. And if we start having people email in edits, I think we get into a big can of worms really fast that could take a lot of time. So that's why I'm just trying to be honest and transparent about that.
Sorry, Councilmember Hunt, I'm still not sure. Do you want us to review them before they go out, or do you just want us to see them before they go out?
I would like to see them, but I suppose I would also, if they are very different than what I'm imagining, because I haven't seen them, then I would like the opportunity to say I don't, because we're approving something tonight that doesn't have this big body of work on the context that's going to be added. So it's difficult to approve something at this stage and then send out something that's going to have a lot more, that's difficult for me to wrap my head around. So I would like to have the opportunity to see it, not to wordsmith it, but to, if it's very different than what I think it would be, I would like the opportunity to say, no, I don't agree with that, actually.
So I guess we could, and Emily, correct me if I'm getting a field of open meeting thing. I assume we could send it out to the council, say this is what we intend to send it out, and then say, can you live with that? You know, it's sort of a.
I think that has to occur in, I think that has to occur, like, I think. I mean.
I was just thinking if it was a general, like, you know, like, send up a flare if you can't live with this, and then if somebody sends up a flare, then we got to have a meeting. I don't, I'm.
Councilmember Hunt.
If it's a process, I mean, I think there are ways that we could, you know, I guess it could be brought up at good of the order. I just, I'm just saying, it's hard for me, overall, this whole process is hard for me to approve something tonight that I haven't seen this.
I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just trying to make sure I understand what we are proposing that we do this evening. Councilmember Goodman.
What's the timing for going out to the public? Does this need to be done?
So I think one of our primary goals with this work is to get through, develop a draft, get out to the community, get some feedback, work through the final, and hopefully adopt a strategic plan in time to go, roll right into budget planning. That requires us to finish up by that first council meeting in May. That gives us some time in April to get out to the community, and that really means that this month, we need to draft the plan and get ready to release it. So our schedule going forward is anticipating that we would be able to release that plan with your go-ahead concurrently to the community, at the same time we would be letting you see that draft. We had not envisioned an additional step to review a draft with council in advance of releasing it to the public.
So a little bit more specifically, I think our plan had been, I'm going to make up dates, to push it out to the public around the same time as we give it to council in conjunction with the March 11th work session. There it is. So we, as David said, concurrently, give it to you to review at the same time we are seeking that community input, and then being able to come back and report out in April what we heard from community members, and then have you do the work of reviewing that information, deciding what tweaks you want to make to the plan, and adopting it through the remainder of April, and taking final action first meeting in May. One other possibility, super dangerous, throw this out here, is you have a regular council meeting on March 4th, that if we worked fast and furiously, and since the intent would be to have it a week later anyway, on the 11th, we might be able to share those drafts with you and get a little bit of feedback during that meeting, and we can have some discussion with council leadership about where on the agenda that might be appropriate.
Councilmember Goodman.
The March 11th council work session draft plan presentation, so that's one more touch before you go out to the community? I don't understand.
No, we would be sending it both to you and the community at the same time.
So it seems to me that if the council had an opportunity to review it ahead of time before the March 4th, even if we just got it that morning, and we could give us a heads up when it's coming.
Sure.
And then at that meeting, and if we were disciplined ourselves to only raise huge issues, not wordsmith.
Yeah, that, can we define the "it"? I want to make sure that we're talking about the same scene, so that "it" would be the context paragraphs. Very good.
Councilmember Ray, you look like you.
No, I think that that's a reasonable path forward.
Councilmember Walsh.
I think it's a reasonable path forward on the context statements. I think we're going to have bigger questions on the actions.
That's the next question up.
I know.
Okay. Context statements, I.
I want to, I would like you to say back what we just, you think we agreed to, Emily, just so we all have a clarity on what you think that deal is.
Yes, what I have committed us to is to develop those draft context paragraphs and to provide them to you pretty close to the March 4th meeting, maybe those are within the packet, maybe they're sent slightly after, but give you an opportunity so on March 4th you could provide us with a little bit of feedback on those paragraphs. We will then take that feedback, make whatever adjustments are needed, and again, you will have to entrust us to synthesize probably diverse opinions, and come to you on then March 11th with those context paragraphs and the rest of the draft plan, and that we would be giving you that draft plan at the same time we would be giving it to community.
And I think implicit in with those context statements, there are a handful of small edits we made tonight that would be made as well, so you'd be getting those back at the same time.
Looks like you see agreement from this.
Okay, I'm going to assume that we're there unless anybody speaks against that right now. Okay, last question.
Administrator Moon.
I hate to do this, but I promised I would report back on our notes reviewing what core infrastructure meant, and this could open a whole can of worms, too. But in June, there was a lot of conversation about this. It led to us ultimately thinking about how to pull some pieces from the infrastructure discussion under growth and development. And based on our review of the video and all the comments made, there wasn't consensus about how to define the word "core." We did move from just calling this goal area "infrastructure" to calling it "core," but at no moment in that meeting did we define that term. I think Brian had made a suggestion that it be focused on the basic things the city needs to do, which may not be the things that citizens are most, you know, aware of or passionate about. Think underground utilities. But then the conversation went right into talking about, are we talking about current infrastructure or growth-related infrastructure? And we didn't return back to that topic. Now, we also didn't modify what was on the screen, and the definition of infrastructure that we have talked about even since, and even in the ad hoc groups, has included all types of infrastructure, utilities, roads, parks, et cetera. I think Council President Martz gave an example about how this council has debated about how to fund and plan for replacement of artificial turf fields, for example, and you may or may not consider that core. And so I think we had, we had kind of a 50-50 split, and so we didn't decide to narrowly define it as maybe those underground utilities, for example, and we kept it broad. The action items that we pursue over time may help us to narrow the focus. I don't, I don't think you absolutely need to define it now, but the other thing that you could do is you could decide to drop the word "core" if you wanted to as well.
Also, great use of the context statement there to list the kind of things the city does.
I'm not sure I understand what's being asked of us.
Yeah, I just said that I would report back on whether or not we had to find the word "core." The answer is, we have not, and everything that I have heard is that there are many council members and community members that believe there's a wide range of infrastructure that we need to be planning for.
Councilmember Hunt.
So I just think the most important thing is that we are clear what we're talking about. So I think that can be done in the context statement, it's probably a good use of that context statement. I also think if we are including all infrastructure, it would be simpler to just remove the word "core." But if we define it, then that takes care of the concern, so that would be fine. And then, once we've defined it, I think maybe that will also, that will also help the community give us specific feedback on, is this, are these the objectives that relate to all of the infrastructure or to, are they broad enough, et cetera?
Councilmember Walsh.
I would encourage the city to look at Salem's critical infrastructure opportunities and challenges, in which they do a very good job of defining both the problem and the set items, and I think that could do quite well for us.
Thank you.
Councilmember Goodman.
I just have one question about engagement. Can you tell me what the engagement will be?
So we, the engagement plans are being developed currently, but we are anticipating that we would spend a fair amount of time trying to get out to the community in a variety of different formats. We would be seeking some input through using Peak Democracy as a primary tool, but also using other tools. We also are expecting that we would make some presentations to each of the boards and commissions to make sure that they're aware and can get some feedback through them as well. So we are anticipating there's kind of a variety of different avenues that we would go out to the community. It's kind of a, we did a very broad engagement on the upfront end of this project. This is also trying to go pretty broad, but not maybe to this kind of fullest depth. We did have a lot of contacts that we developed through that first round of engagements. We want to take the opportunity to loop back around to folks and let them know that this is where we're at in the process and to get their feedback, given that there are a fairly large number of folks who had given input and had asked to stay informed.
Councilmember Goodman.
Boards and commissions that you're talking about going to, were they part of the, they involved initially?
They were, they did receive periodic updates on the strategic plan.
Okay, were they part of the gathering input, or are they just pushing out information?
Yes, they were, that as well.
Okay, well, because I'm getting at is, it looks like we have a pretty compressed schedule up here, we don't have a lot of time. And so I know we're not, we can't hit everybody that provided information, that would be just a request, but to the extent that we can hit, try to hit groups that initially provided feedback, to see if this is consistent at all with kind of what they're thinking, I think would be great. Thanks.
Absolutely, thank you.
And I ask, there was quite a bit of thought that went into charrette attendance. Is there an idea that maybe we could also engage the folks who had been part of the charrette?
Yeah, I think that's our intent, is to loop back with folks that have been involved and also just open up engagement to all at this point.
One more question. We debated before we got into the goals and objectives about whether or not you wanted to include the list of potential actions that have been in the earlier draft in the materials that you send out to the community. I heard differing opinions on that. If I had to summarize what I think I've heard toward the second half of the conversation tonight, is we haven't really debated those actions. So my sense of the temperature of the group is maybe to not include them in what gets sent out, but I'm not sure of that, and this would be the time to make a decision about do we put that menu of potential actions out with the plan.
So what I'd suggest for the sake of time is that each of us give a, give sort of a thought on this question. Want to start, Councilmember Walsh?
Sure. My question really is, when will we get a chance to talk about the actions? Because if I'm looking at that condensed set of dates, I'm not seeing a time when we would really have a chance to have a conversation about them, and that concerns me.
So I would think that when you would get to the point that you were actually approving actions, would be as you move into the budget process later in the year, that in, in May, you're approving the strategic plan, which is approving mission, vision, goals, objectives, performance measures in that document, and then through the budget development process and moving to the budget and work plan, you would actually be approving what the actions were going to be in 2020. Sounds.
So then my understanding is, at that point, we would have already adopted the strategic plan.
With the objectives.
Okay, so when I'm looking, so first of all, when I'm looking at the other three plans that were provided as examples, all of them included actions, and I think a plan without actions is fairly half-baked and suggests to the community that this is just thoughts of what we would like to see, but we have no sense of how we're going to do that, which I feel would give us a lot of complaints, and it doesn't give us a chance to really talk these things over in this sense, so.
So just for context, in all three of those other plans, you're right, they include Council did not weigh in on the actions on any of those plans. They approved the objectives and trusted the staff to list the actions, and we got a few comments about a word here or there. There was no action by the council on the actions in any of those plans.
Doug, I'm going to put you on the spot. What do you want to do?
I don't want to put something out unless we've had a chance to talk about it.
Let's go next. Councilmember Ray.
I don't think we've had a chance to talk about it. I don't want to put something out there until we've had a chance to vet it, so, and since they are, as I understand, examples of what we might do, not commitments of what we are going to do, let's withhold them for the time being.
Would like to go next. Council Deputy President Patisse.
So I'm a bit flexible on this issue, and I can see both sides. I wonder also if there might be the ability to, well, I'll hold that for later. We haven't had a chance to talk through the action plans, so I would say let's hold back on that for now. I do think that there's still just so much value having the objectives, the goals and objectives and performance measures go out for community feedback, and we may end up getting feedback that even goes into some of the action plans and helps us as we're thinking that through.
Councilmember Goodman.
I would like to give the community ideas of how we might accomplish these things. I think we can be clear that these are just ideas, and because I think if we just present the plan, draft plan without those actions, I don't think it's as meaningful.
Councilmember Hunt.
I agree with Councilmember Goodman, and I think for, when I was in the small groups and really until today, I was thinking that the actions would be example, or would be the things that we would be trying to do to meet the different objectives. And so I think having an idea of how we would meet the objectives, some of which are pretty directional, or you. directional, or you could go about them in lots of different ways, I think it does give a more concrete idea about the sort of approaches that the city would consider. I think we have to be super careful that we are saying these are potential, and that these are not the things that we are planning to do in the next five years, if that's the understanding. Because right now, that's not clear. So it just needs to be super clear that these are the sorts of actions that we would do to meet the objectives. But I do think that having feedback on the actions, the benefit of that is important. And I think it also helps, I think it would also help the community think through the objective, and maybe also give us better feedback on the objective. Because then you have more idea of how the council would meet the objective, and then you might think differently about that objective and have a different opinion. So overall, I share the concern that we haven't talked about them as much, and that some of them are, maybe some of them we haven't talked about at all. But I also think that we, I think the benefit of having community input outweighs my concern about that, as long as we can make it clear that these are potential.
Right.
Let me adjust my comment there. I do not support having actions in the final version until we have a chance to talk about it. I would support having them in a version, draft version, going out to the community, provided we eliminated the timing and cost columns, and very much clarified that these were potential actions. And in fact, maybe even asked the community if they thought of any others. Maybe that's too much to ask. But to use that as a way to explain the objectives, so.
Okay. So you would be a yes if the time, if the project information was stripped out?
Yeah.
The time and cost. All right. I'm a no, because this feels like moving the ball at the end, close to the end of the game. We went into the ad hoc groups, giving specific guidance not to spend time on the action items. And if I had thought that the action items were going to be part of what went out to the community, I mean, there's inertia. And things that go out to the community are effectively part of the straw man. And I'm not ready to say that on these set of action items. We did this for two reasons. One was because we said that philosophically, priorities, goals, objectives, and performance metrics were public policy level issues, and that as much as possible, we were going to make the action items sort of administrative, leave it up to the administration to do it as they saw fit. And the second was, as a function of time. If we want to open this up for action items, this schedule is out the window. And we can do that, if that's the will of the council. But I think putting stuff in front of the public that we haven't talked through first, and representing it as the straw man for this plan, is a bad idea. Chris? Councilmember Ray?
Either one. What are we going to ask the public to do with the information we give them? So we're going to, you know, we're going to give them goals and objectives and actions. Are we asking them to rate them and say, yes, I support that, no, I don't? Are we asking them to comment on them? I'm not clear to me what the public engagement return is going to be. And that might be significant.
It's a Likert scale of how much do you support, oh, sorry. Say your name. Gabriel Silverblatt with BDS Planning. I think what we'd be talking about is, and as we've done in other parts of this process, using the online tool to engage a question about, you know, relative, how much you support any particular objective, how important it is to you, from not at all important, all the way to extremely important. So trying to get a sense of that. And we can construct those questions in a variety of fashions. But it's basically asking those questions around the goals and objectives. And I do think that the actions, allowing potential actions to be out there, does help folks to understand the context around, people who are coming to this with almost no context, to see those actions allows them to understand how much they care relative to others. So I do think that there is value from an engagement standpoint on that.
I'm hearing two different things, though. One is to use them for context setting relative to an objective. That's one thing. And the other is, I want to hear what you think about this action, this specific action in support of that objective.
Gabriel was suggesting we ask, the question is about the objective.
Correct.
And the actions are shown there as possible activities that would happen.
Right. And that's why I was hearing two things. Because what I heard from, I thought I heard from councilmembers Goodman and Hunt, and possibly Walsh, is, no, we want to hear what you're thinking about this particular action item. And so that's why I asked the question. It's a very different question.
If you put yourself in the participants' shoes, the difference between those two subtleties is probably 10-minute survey and 45-minute survey, because you've got three actions for every objective. Suddenly, you've got a bazillion questions there. And I bet you're going to get just a handful of people that actually do go all the way through that.
So I just think, I mean, it's the same thing, the question I was asking with living wage jobs. I want to be really clear on what, that we are all on the same page, are talking about the same thing when we make a decision to do something. So if we're talking about putting them in there for context setting, I fear that a lot, because I don't see an upside to it. And I see a big old downside, which is, we start to set expectations. If we're looking for input, I can at least see an upside, which is, yeah, they think that's a good way to go about it, or they think it's a bad way to go about it. And so, at least I see an upside to that. But then I want to balance that, I mean, I'm just all over the map here. But I want to balance that with Brian's point, which it will triple, quadruple the length of the time it takes to do the survey, and that will dramatically reduce the participation rate. So I just think we need to be upfront about what we're asking, and what we expect to get back, and what impact that's going to have on our citizens who are finishing the survey.
Council Deputy President Batiste.
I was wondering if there might be a way to sort of encompass both, and have the survey go out that has the goals and objectives, and then lead people back to if they have additional comments that they would like to make on the example action items that we have discussed, that they could link in a different way, and go back and provide. I guess I'm concerned about, it's sort of a large amount of data to get information on. And it would be great to get, you know, really targeted comments that are focused on the goal and objective level, to see if we're where we need to be. But there could be an opportunity to, if there are people out there that really want to take a look at what those example actions are, they could also have that opportunity.
It would certainly be possible, just thinking aloud here, to produce a draft plan that has sort of straw man, has potential actions in it as part of the context for those things, and send out a input tool that asks questions about the goals and objectives and level of support for those, and says, if you want to read the whole rest of this thing, go to this link. And those people that really wanted to read that could find it. And we'd have room in that document to say, these are potential actions. They'll get addressed during budget cycles in the future. That would be quite possible, to create that input tool that, as Deputy Counsel President Batiste suggested.
All right. Well, it sounds like we have a majority that want to move forward with, in some capacity, I count at least four, either fully including the action items, or including them without the time and cost, in some sort of, it's still a little bit murky.
Consultants would agree with not including the time and cost as part of that. That was mostly because you all asked the questions. I strongly would recommend you not put that in the plan. It's more like, you asked, how much would all this cost? And so, staff gave you an estimate.
Am I hearing that you're in favor of doing that, provided that it's teed up in a certain way?
I can get behind putting, generally, I am opposed to putting the actions in there, because I think, regardless of what we call them, they're going to be interpreted as things we're going to do. So if people love them, then they're going to set some expectation. People hate them, they're going to think we're off the mark. What I want to be clear on is, what I heard was that the value in including them was so we could have people evaluate them. So if we just put them as context, the value of including them is diminished. And that's what I think I heard, but I just want to confirm that with my friends.
Councilmember Walsh.
Context for me, if I was going to do the survey, is, can I read Objective 2 and evaluate that clearly according to what the council meant? And I think in those senses, the action items provide some of the context that says, oh, this is what they meant by regular monitoring, blah, 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 blah. So I think they're valuable to get good feedback from the community.
May I suggest a sort of compromise in between, which is trying to respond to Councilmember Ray's comment about the value of including them would be to evaluate them. One might, and we've certainly done this before, ask, instead of asking one question for every, asking people to evaluate every single individual action, one might evaluate, how does this collection of actions, if pursued by the city, how would that, you know, how would that, do you feel that that would mean meaningful progress on the objective? And so you could be asking about the actions as a group. You could be asking about how much they like or dislike, or how important the objectives are individually, and the goals as well. So you'd be asking sort of basically three questions per goal area.
Per what? I missed to the end.
Per goal area.
Goal.
So you'd be asking, well, you'd be asking, sorry, you'd be asking one evaluation of the goal, then one on each of the objectives, and then you'd have to ask one question on the suite of actions for each objective.
Okay.
Yep.
Because, I mean, we're, the challenge is, we're sort of 3 hours and 15 minutes into this conversation, and now we're having this sort of, what I think is a really important conversation about how we, what we do next. I mean, if you go to the public and you say, we have a priority for growth and development, how do you feel about that? We have an objective, infrastructure is planned in anticipation of future growth, leveraging development and incorporating innovative, sustainable, and resilient design. Well, maybe they weren't, oh, sorry, and you have the goal underneath that. First, you have a priority of growth and development, then you have a specific goal, then you have a bunch of specific objectives, and then you either have, you ask for an evaluation of the suite. I mean, you're several nested layers in on a subject, that if they don't like either the objective, or the goal, or the priority area, the value of how they feel about the specific suite of action items is, the value of that is zero, right? If they don't like any of the things that were above it.
So I guess I would ask the council, do you really want to give detailed feedback on how we're going to do the input, or do you want to let the staff use the tool that they've developed to figure out the best way to get the--
What tool?
Pardon?
What tool? You said use the tool that they've developed.
Peak Democracy and the other tools that David mentioned. I mean, we weren't planning to design a questionnaire tonight, and I didn't come, you know, with a draft, or we were assuming that we would design that and execute it. But if the council wants to--
It's germane to this question about what you do with action item information, right? That's the reason that we're having this discussion, right?
I would recommend that you keep your feedback to get feedback on the actions, or don't get feedback on the actions, and then let the staff figure out how to do that.
Okay. Well, I'm trying to parse through how I feel about getting feedback on the actions, but-- Councilmember Ray.
I actually like Gabriel's idea. I mean, if we're going to solicit feedback on the actions, let's do them in bulk, and get an aggregate feeling like, you know, I think that'll be effective, I don't think that'll be effective, some sliding scale, and then provide an opportunity for comment there. I think that would, that would get to what I think I was hearing of the value of putting the actions in there. Give us some new information, help us to bear it through this information, and at the same time, not be such an onerous surveying thing.
I think next was Councilmember Hunt, and then Councilmember Goodman.
So I think that, yeah, that consolidated approach would be fine. I think, and it was mostly to respond to Councilmember Ray's question earlier about, is this about context? I mean, I think the value is more that some of these, you know, like neighborhoods retain their charm. If you read that and you say, yes, that's really important, but how is the city going to do that? If you read the action, that might inform your ability to say how important that should be in the city's strategic plan. And so I think that's how I've been trying to think about it. So it is, for me, a value of more giving that context for people that are willing to take the survey and willing to put in the time to read the plan. So I think for that side. And then, yes, I also agree, I mean, but I also think we're not trying to write a survey right now. None of us have proposed to write the questionnaire. So we're just trying to struggle through whether we want the actions or not. And I would be fine with getting consolidated, you know, how do you feel about overall, if this would, if these actions would move us in the right direction? That would be fine. But really, the value, I think, is to show the kind of things that we would do, so that people could be more informed about their opinion on the objective, and give us more feedback on that.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman.
I like the approach that was proposed, I think.
Council Deputy President Batiste.
So thank you for that. I think that that proposed consolidation helps me a little bit more. I'm just, I was struggling with, like, all the information that might come back, and being able to try to make sense of that. So I think that if, I also think putting it all together in a consolidated manner, when we're talking about the action plans, gives more emphasis to the fact that this, these are examples, this might be what we tried to do, but it does provide context. So I think that if we can go about it in that manner, and just at very, you know, 10,000-foot level, would these action plans be helpful, or, you know, whatever wording we come up with, I would feel better about it. I would be okay with the action plans going out if we're consolidating in that way, and obviously putting all sorts of language around the fact that this, these are examples representative to give context.
Thank you. So I'm still completely opposed, but clearly in the minority. So let's move on. We should have reviewed action items in the ad hoc groups if we were thinking about doing this, but let's move on.
Okay. So I hear at least a preponderance of feeling that we are going to show example actions in the outreach and get people in aggregate to give us feedback on how they feel about those. And so I guess the last thing that, I think the single last question that we had is just a sense giving, we want to know kind of where we are. We've spent really a ton of time going through a lot of this detail. And I guess the middle question there is, we have walked this through. I know there are a variety of edits that are out there. There's an objective that we're putting back in for community feedback. We had a few small edits. I guess, making the assumption that we go out to feedback from the community and don't get some overwhelming revolution. I'd love to get a sense from council members, just sort of one by one, how you're feeling about this. Are you feeling like you're not ready to support this plan? Are you kind of on the fence? You feeling pretty good about, like, we're getting close to the finish line? So staff and everybody else can kind of have a sense of how we're doing on getting to the finish line.
Should we go around? Just go, want to go, start with you? Should we go around, just go, want to go, start with you, Councilmember Goodman? Just going physically around? Either or? Would you prefer to go first, or shall I?
I'll go first. I am comfortable with this set of priorities, goals, objectives and performance metrics. I'm concerned to see what the feedback will be in the form that it takes and what it does to this, but I, but these particular priorities, goals, objectives and performance metrics, I can get behind.
I think we've, the process that we've ended up taking to break into the small groups, I know we had a lot of questions around that as we went forward, but being able to participate in the small groups and being able to really take a deep dive into these topics, and then to be able to watch and hear from my fellow council members as they took deep dives into this topic, and then to be able to talk about it again as a group, has made me feel comfortable with the plan, and I would, I do feel supportive of the plan going forward.
Councilmember Walsh?
So, I'm supportive of the plan going forward. I'm wondering if there is at all a possibility on the March 11th or April 8th meeting to have conversation about the actions, particularly if we get feedback from the community. And so, that would be my only hope going forward, is that we do get a chance to touch on it after it goes to the community.
Councilmember Ray?
Well, this one's kind of hard. I think the goals and objectives generally are good. The measurements, I still think need some tweaking, and there's some identified holes in those. The potential actions just scare me to death, because I don't, I still don't understand how they fit in, and in the conversations we've had about how we're going to use the plan, you know, Brian used a word that was called, it was like they were intended actions, which just scares me to death, because I'm not sure that they, we think they are intended actions.
I thought I said potential actions, but I could have said intended or something.
Yeah. And so, I just think we got to be really careful on the words that we use, because the words carry a lot of message. So, I think, I think we're getting closer. I think, I had a conversation with Emily this afternoon, this is a tool, you know, and we've invested a lot in this tool, so we have to know how we're going to use this tool, and it's a power tool. And, you know, with me and power tools, I just don't want to cut my fingers off. So, I just want to make sure that we know how to use this thing as we move forward, and that it helps bring us together and not give us a club to bludgeon each other with. So, those are just some of my worries.
Councilmember Hunt?
So, firstly, we've had a number of sort of check-ins, and I just wanted to start with, my perspective is that we aren't really, we aren't really saying, at this point, you know, we have put the stamp on the goals, objectives and measures, and it's all a process. We will eventually get to an end product that we will eventually vote on after it's gone back to the community, after we've gotten more community input. So, I'm not, I don't, because we've had a number of check-ins, I don't know that, I just want to be careful that I'm not saying like, yes, I'm fully supportive, because I think it's at an interim point in the process. I am okay with this going to the public at this point and getting community feedback, partly because I think it would be beneficial to have this plan for budget to see how that is working, and so, to do that, we need to stay on track. I understand that. But I also have some concerns around the measures, which we didn't talk that much about. So, one of the other plans, Tacoma, has these accountability measures, and it seems to me, one idea that I had reading these other plans is, if we have real, if we put in more thought and we get more community input and we really are comfortable with the measures, and then those become our sort of accountability measures that we say, have we moved the needle on these things in five years, then we've been successful. I think that would be good. That does mean that we'll need to review those more. So, I'm comfortable with these going out to the public and just, it's wanted to make clear that I see this as one more step in a process, and eventually, we will see how the end product turns out.
Councilmember Goodman?
I'm comfortable with this draft going back to the, for community engagement now. I don't know that I could support this particular draft as written. I have stated my concerns in a variety of times about the size of the plan and the, some lack of discipline in putting the plan together, which has, in my opinion, led it to be too large and include too much. I think it needs to be more strategic. But I am very supportive of a strategic plan, as everyone knows, and so, I am anxious for the next step, and I'm hoping, planning on getting to, yes, depending on what the next couple of months bring.
There you go.
Okay. Thank you for that feedback. That's very helpful for us figuring out the next steps, and I think we have achieved what we were trying to achieve tonight.
All right. And thank you for facilitating this very involved conversation this evening. Really did a good job.
Thanks to all of you.
So, that concludes ID 0358. For the next agenda item, the Issaquah Police Department and IPD will provide the city council, oh, there's no members of the public here this evening. Sorry. Yes, let me just say, there's no members of the public this evening, so I haven't called for public comment. The Issaquah Police Department and IPD will provide the city council training related to security protocols in the council chambers. This portion of the work session will not be televised, as council members and staff will be moving throughout the room. If there had been any public in attendance, or if any members in the public join us in the next few minutes, they'll be welcome to remain in the room for the training.